Are there any other questions or final comments?
Some people are actually from the media.
Certainly. Anything else? Well, thank you again. We appreciate you being here today. We appreciate the support and we're very excited about this project that is destined to improve and give us safer and cleaner water here in DeKalb County. Thank you.
To my colleagues, welcome to our regular meeting of the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners, Business Meeting for May 24, 2022, which is the 50th meeting being conducted by Commissioner Robert Patrick, and I have the honor of serving as the Presiding Officer of the Board. I want to extend a special word of thanks to the departments and all staff members for their hard work that makes it possible for the governing authority to conduct our meetings and broadcast them to the public. As of now, the public comment period is open and will remain open until 10:00 a.m. We have a dedicated email address where public comments may be sent. That email address is publiccomment@decalbcountyga.gov. I'll repeat that. Public comment@decalbcountyga.gov. Only the comments received during this period will be read by the clerk as indicated in the rules for public comment in the agenda. All comments will be included in the official record of the meeting. Finally, to the listening public, I ask for your understanding as we continue to fine-tune this process. To the extent that there are glitches in today's meetings, I ask for your patience as we work to correct them. As a reminder to my colleagues, the county attorney has asked for an executive session today. With that said, we'll get into our regular agenda, and today we have Dr. Stephen Stein Hilber, President of the Luther Rice College and Seminary.
Thank you, Commissioner Patrick. I appreciate the invitation and CEO Thurman, appreciate you allowing me to come and approach and talk today. My name is Steve Stein. I serve as the President of Luther Rice College and Seminary. For those of you who are not familiar with our school, we've been in DeKalb County for over 31 years now. We reside over on Evans Mill Road, right off of I-20. We've been here since 1991. We serve over 1,000 students. But if you come by our campus, you probably think, well, where do all those 1,000 students reside? They don't. We have them all over the world and all over the United States. We've been a distance education school for 60 years, and the Lord has continued to bless us with that. We have many people that live around this area that come on the campus. We have a diverse population of students, a population of students that doesn't look like other seminaries around the United States. We're 50% Caucasian, 50% African American, 70% male, 30% female. So we serve a more diverse population of students, and we've just done that organically. And it's just been a beautiful thing to see how the Lord has blessed us to be able to reach everyone with the gospel. Myself, I've been with Luther Rice for 10 years, been president for just about nine. So continue to pray for me and my staff as we continue to lead this organization. And just before I get into today's short message, I just want to stress that we provide ministry degrees. So we prepare Christian men and women for ministry who are called to ministry at the undergraduate, graduate, and doctoral level. You can do that on campus or online. But what we've also done, Commissioner Patrick, is we've just launched these degrees called Ministry in the Marketplace degrees. We believe that ministry goes beyond just the church walls. We believe it goes into the communities. So what we've just launched is a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology taught from a Christian worldview. We will be launching a Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration, Lord willing, next year. And we have out for approval right now. We hope to launch this fall a PhD in organizational leadership. So our goal is to not only prepare people within the four walls of the church, but also send men and women into your community, into DeKalb County, in the surrounding counties, to make our communities a God-fearing, gospel-winning men and women. So thank you for this time. I want to direct our attention this morning very quickly to the Book of Micah, Micah, Chapter 6, in particular, verse 8. There's a gentleman by the name of Dr. Ronall. He's a pastor here at DeKalb County, just a wonderful man. He actually is the CEO of a small organization called Reaching in Meeting Needs. And when I became president, he directed me towards this passage of scripture. And Micah, for those of you who know, was a prophet at the time, 600 to 700 B.C. The Israelites, the land of Israel and Judah, they were no longer under their own control. They were just coming out from underneath the Babylonian...I'm sorry, my...okay. They were just under Babylonian control, and now it was transitioning to Syrian control. So they were in their own control of their own destiny. And so you see in this Book of Micah, Micah having this conversation with God, and God is pleading his case to them. He's saying, "I haven't gone anywhere." In fact, in Chapter 6, verse 3, he says, "Oh, my people, what have I done to you? How have I wearied you?" Answered me, "For I brought you out of the land of Egypt and redeemed you from the house of slavery, and I set you before Moses, Aaron, and Miriam." And he's making his case that he is still God. But then Micah responds for the people. He says, "Well, what shall we do, God? Bow before you on high? Shall we come before you with burnt offerings and calves a year old? Will the Lord be pleased with thousands of rams, with tens of thousands of rivers of oil? Shall I give my firstborn for my transgressions?" And just like us today, we say, "Lord, what can we do for you? What can we give to you? Can we give offerings? Can we give sacrifices?" And people at DeKalb County, I want you to hear what the Lord says back to Micah. He says, "I don't want any of that. I don't want your sacrifices. I don't want your thousands of rams or your thousands of rivers of oil." The Lord says this. He says, "Oh, man, let me tell you what is good and what the Lord requires of you." He says to do three things. He says, "Do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with your God." So this morning, that rings true for me every day as I wake up and I go about doing my business. And I was so thankful that CEO Thurman allowed me to come and just share a word with you this morning because it's something that each one of us as leaders or wherever the Lord's called us in DeKalb County, Newton County, where I reside, wherever it may be, if we can treat people with these three things in mind, to do justice. And what does that mean? Just do the right thing. Treat all people equally. Don't have different weights to measure different things. Let's treat everybody equally regardless of the color of their skin, regardless of their gender. Let's do justice as the Lord says. He also says to love kindness. Well, that's easy to say but hard to do. Even as a born-again child of God, who I'm supposed to love my neighbor as myself, as Jesus says, or to love my God with all my heart, soul, and mind, I'm still a sinful person. I still have a sin nature that lives in me, and I live in a selfish manner sometimes. But with the Holy Spirit of God who lives inside of me, he gives me the opportunity to love others as I love myself. So the Lord has told us to act with justice, to do justice, to love others as we love ourselves. And then finally, walk humbly before the Lord. That could be the hardest thing because what Micah really means in that passage of scripture is he means "do the Lord's will," not our will, not Dr. Stein Hilber's will, or Commissioner Patrick's will, or CEO Thurman's will. While we have a role in this community, in this county, we're also to submit to the Lord's will and what the Lord wants for us. And we are to be in his Word and to be in constant communication with him to find out what he wants for us to serve his people. So Commissioners, DeKalb County, CEO Thurman, your staff here this morning, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to share God's Word with you this morning. And I pray that as you go home today and you're looking for a passage of scripture to meditate on and to pray on and to read more about, I challenge you, as Dr. Ronall has challenged me, to go to Micah 6:8 and really see that the Lord does not want our offerings. He does not want our sacrifices unto him. What he wants is all of us. He wants our heart. He wants our compassion. And he wants us to follow his will and to treat people with justice. So I thank you. And as President of Luther Rice, I'll close with this. Yes, we want your students. If there's anybody within the sound of my voice or if you know of somebody that needs to further their education, we just got SACS accreditation. We've worked for 20 years to get that. So now our accreditation is on par with that of Georgia Tech, Georgia, University of Georgia, and so forth. So transferability of credits, and it's just a beautiful thing. We're able to play in that arena now. But at the same time, if you know somebody that's looking for a college or a seminary from a Christian or a biblical worldview and would benefit from ministry degrees, or maybe a Ministry in the Marketplace degree, we're your place. But at the same time, we want to be a community partner. We want to play and be able to influence the community with the gospel. And that's my commitment to you, and that was my commitment to CEO Thurman when I sat down with him several weeks ago. And that actually gave me the opportunity here, CEO Thurman, to spend some time this morning. He said, "Well, I've got an opportunity for you to address the council." We want to be more active in this community. So my door is always open. Come visit our campus. Come schedule time to meet with me. You can go on our website to learn more. You can contact me directly. CEO Thurman and his assistant have my direct email and my cell phone number. I would love to talk to you more. I turn it back over to you, Commissioner Patrick. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Stein Hilber, thank you so much for being with us and your inspirational words, "justice, love kindness, and walk humbly." Easy words, hard tasks, but thank you for your suggestions. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, with that said, we'll move on to our next item in the agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. And today, Commissioner Terry is going to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Terry. Next, we'll have the COVID response. And I see our CEO is here with us today. Mr. CEO?
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good morning, members of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you once again for the opportunity to visit with you. We will, as you know, we are continuing our many efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Recent reports, somewhat troubling, is that the COVID virus and its sub-variants beginning to see an uptick in the number of infections all across this country and above the fold headline this morning, or at least right below the fold, that we're seeing an increased number of infections here in the state of Georgia. Our county monitoring is also picking that up. One of the more concerning aspects of the story is that with the advent of at-home rapid tests, the numbers that are being reported are, quite frankly, not indicative of the serious number of infections that are taking place. We're going to continue to monitor that and take appropriate steps, however and whenever necessary. We'll provide you with an update. Our T-LAC Rural Assistance Program, our great coalition partnership with our various agencies, with courts, legal aid, our mediators and others, the DeKalb Housing Authority. To date, as of May 16, we've distributed $41.6 million in rural assistance, and that is ongoing. There are approximately 2,000 applications still pending, and we're steadily working to reduce those. This past weekend, we distributed 5,000 boxes of fresh fruits and vegetables, protein, and a dozen eggs. And also, I'd like to thank everyone who worked on that, Mr. Williams, Ms. Sims, as well as police and fire, especially our recruits who actually did the hard work. It's always good for us to watch young people work hard, but we got an excellent group of recruits in fire and police, and we're very proud of those. Thankful to our faith leaders, who without them, none of this would be possible. And to the farmers in South Georgia. Interestingly enough, and I know some of you visited the sites, I know we were finished in 30, 40 minutes at each one of the sites, and people were so appreciative. The ones, the sites I visited, I didn't get to all of them. But it speaks to the challenges that our citizens are facing every day, particularly with inflation, now stagflation, and the challenge to get food on the table. One lady really just cried in her car at Rehoboth. She was there for herself and an elderly neighbor. Yesterday, we announced, and I want to thank you all for the support of the $1 million you all allocated or approved two weeks ago to engage or finance and support existing community-based efforts to balance intervention. We made the announcement yesterday. I think Mr. Damon Clark and Human Resources, they're going to manage this process. And I would really appreciate that if you have or are aware of a community-based organization, nonprofits, faith institutions, whatever they may be, who have ongoing initiatives that are focused on positive intervention for our young people, please help us in encouraging them to submit applications. There are more details in the press release about the rollout and the application process, but we want to move expeditiously and get that out. Unless, Mr. Williams, that's all I have today, unless there's something else that you want to mention. All right. Once again, we appreciate the support and encouragement and just appreciate the fact that we're going to continue this fight until this disease is no longer stalking, taking lives, and destroying the health and financial stability of our citizens and residents in DeKalb County. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Mr. CEO, thank you so much. Looking at my Commissioners, I see Commissioner Terry has his hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Appreciate the update from the CEO and appreciate the ongoing community work, especially the food distribution at Brandon Hills this Saturday as well. That was a site that was added in the last week. So appreciate the 100 boxes of food that were able to support those residents. They were very appreciative of it. I did want to point out that we are going to be receiving our second tranche of the American Rescue Plan funds, I assume maybe this week or next week. It's been a year since we've received the first tranche. Each Commissioner was allocated $1.4 million in discretionary funds to direct towards community improvement programs, vaccine initiatives, violence prevention, rental relief, utility assistance, job training, environmental, green stormwater, infrastructure improvements. And to this date, only $200,000 of the funds that District 6 has allocated has actually been written and cut in a check. And so I want to encourage all of us to focus on the emergency that is before us. Many Commissioners have put forward projects that address community violence for months now. And I say months, I mean going back, at this point, six to eight months, yet those funds have not been expended. And the problem I'm seeing continues to be that these are emergency funds, and Commissioners are trying to spend them, but we have not been able to do that. And it's not for lack of trying. We have to go through the process. My concern is that we've allocated another million dollars of American Rescue Plan money for community violence prevention, but the need is right now. The summer is starting. I've got a project, $25,000 from Orrin Hudson, Checkmate Hudson, who wants to do and continue supporting, expanding his youth violence prevention program. I'm concerned that the money's not going to arrive for him to do a summer program. He'll do it in the fall, but the summer is when we need to use those community violence prevention funds. So I just want to encourage, you know, just the governing authority, all of us, whatever it takes, if it's anything the Commissioners can do, please let us know. But I don't want to wait another two to three months or another six months to get this money out the door because it needs to be spent, and there is a need in the community, as we've all acknowledged on here. But going from saying we're going to spend money to actually getting checks cut and assistance out into the community, it's not manifesting itself in real action. And until that money gets spent, we are not doing our full capacity of what we can do right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Commissioners, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, and I just got an update. Looks like we're actually not going to have executive session today. So that'll be one less item on our agenda. Well, with that being said, we're going to move on. Of course, today, we do have one public item, a public hearing item at 10 o'clock, and we will move on to the rest of the agenda. In the meantime, nothing is under appeals. Under appointments, we have Agenda Item 1666 for District 3, approval of appointment of J. Caroline Freeman as Associate Judge of the Probate Court of DeKalb County, Georgia, and approve the compensation for said position at an annual salary of $129,377.
I'm going to move that we defer this to our next meeting and have a hearing on the establishment of this particular post and consult with the staff on an interview of the nominated judge. So my motion is to defer.
Motion to defer. All right. Commissioner Rader, just for clarity, that's going to be deferred to the special call meeting we're having this week?
Yes, I mean, for the...yes, for hearing at the special call meeting, but the...oh, no, not to have the...during...so to our next regularly scheduled meeting, second Tuesday of June.
Perfect. All right. And can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson. With that said, let me get to the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry, excuse me, Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That's 6-0 to defer. All right, moving on to the next item. This is for District 4, Agenda Item 1647, approve the appointment of Dr. Gerald D. Austin, Sr., to the Charter Review Commission.
To approve.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. We have a proper motion and second, and I'll move into the roll. There's no questions. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that as well, 6-0. Moving on to our next item, under the Chief Executive Office, Agenda Item 1654, appointment to the Fulton DeKalb Hospital Authority, Grady Patricia L. Bastana Henry, MD.
I will move deferral to our next meeting for a stop in the PEX Committee for Review. Second, and that's the first meeting, regularly scheduled meeting in June.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader for the motion. Commissioner Davis Johnson for the second. We'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. That's 6-0 in the affirmative. Moving on to our consent agenda. It looks like we have a substitute for 1582. This is under the airport. And I'll ask the Deputy Presiding Officer how she wants to proceed with these.
Yeah, you can...yeah, you can take all of them together.
Okay.
And pull out 1582.
We'll do that. So move over to 1591. This is for Commission Districts 1 and 6, termination of standard teehanger lease agreement with Jim Flock. There is no cost to the county.
Move for action.
Agenda Item 1616, standardized teehanger lease agreement with Michael C. Powell. There is no cost to the county.
Move for action.
Agenda Item 1620, approval of minutes for the May 17, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Move for action.
Agenda Item 1667, allocation to appropriate American Rescue Award Funds assigned to Poeta account, and we can all read that account number. Reserve for District 3, amount not to exceed $35,000 to community-based organizations to build stronger communities and to help mitigate efforts for those impacted by COVID-19 by educating and bringing awareness of the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts.
Move for action.
For District 6, Agenda Item 1652, approve $25,000 from District 6 ARP appropriation to support the Be Someone's Incorporated Summer Break Virtual Chess and Life Skills Instruction Program.
Move for action.
Right. And then for District 7, Agenda Item 1648, to appropriate $25,000 in American Rescue Plan grant funds assigned to Poeta account. Everybody can read those account numbers. Reserve for the District 7 appropriation to one powerhouse to mitigate the public health emergency created by the COVID-19 pandemic.
Move for action.
We're going to skip 1605. 1632, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meetings of May 10, 2022.
Move for action.
And then we have Agenda Item 1623, donation of firefighting gear to Terry Farrell Firefighters' Fund, 501(c)(3) organization. Estimated value is $5,000.
Move for action.
And finally, Agenda Item 1587, building opportunities for out-of-school time summer grant, $200,000.
Move for action.
Right.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I make the motion that we approve Item 1591, Item 1616, Item 1620, Item 1667, Item 1652, Item 1648, Item 1632, Item 1623, and Item 1587.
All right. Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rader, for that second. We'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on those as well, 6-0. Okay, circling back to Agenda Item 1605. This was the approval of the minutes.
1582. 1582 was a substitute.
All right, we'll do 1582. Standardized teehanger lease agreement with Murray Forbes. There is no cost to the county.
I move approval of the substitute, which contains a correction of the date of the lease.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader and Commissioner Davis Johnson. With that, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that, 6-0 for the approval. All right. Moving over to Agenda Item 1605, approval Approval of Minutes of the Special Called Meeting of May third, twenty twenty-two. This, the staff is asking to defer. Can I get a motion?
Move that this item be deferred.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. And Commissioner Cochrane Johnson, was that a second?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. We'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that deferral, six zero. All right. Moving on to preliminary items, we've got, under District Six, Agenda Item sixteen fifty-three. Approval of a hundred thousand dollars District AARP Six Appropriation That will be dispersed in twenty-five thousand dollar annual increments over the next four years to support the DeKalb Community Service Board's Apex Program Summer Camp Program.
Yes, and this has been referred to the PEX Committee. So just, we'll just do it. I'll motion for a deferral for two weeks.
Okay. And then we'll move on to Agenda Item sixteen fifty-four. All right, we'll take a second. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Go into the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six zero on that item. All right, moving on to Agenda Item sixteen fifty-six. To amend the Code of DeKalb County, Georgia as revised nineteen eighty-eight, Chapter Twenty, Article Eight, to recognize General Election Day as a paid holiday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Also, this has been referred to the ERPS Committee. So I'll be defer for two weeks. Motion to defer for two weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. Commissioner, moving into the roll, Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that one, six zero to defer. Moving on next is Agenda Item fifteen ninety-six. Resolution Authorizing Membership and ACCG Inter-Local Risk Management Agency Supplemental Medical Assistance and Disability Fund to Obtain Maintain Firefighter Cancer Insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The ERPS Committee heard this and recommended approval to the full board. So with that, I'll move to approve Item fifteen ninety-six.
All right. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. With that, we'll move into the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson? Oh, I see you saying that. Yep, gotcha. No worries. Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six zero on that one as well. Next item is under the GIS Department, Agenda Item sixteen twenty-seven. This is for Commission Districts Two and Six to Consider Consentings to Deannexation of Property Located at two fifty West Parkwood Road, Decatur, Georgia.
Move to defer for reviewing the PEX Committee?
Right. And I think Commissioner Terry got that second. All right, we'll move on to the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that one as well, six zero. All right, next is under the Juvenile Court. Agenda Item sixteen hundred. Request for Approval of Contract in the Amount Not to Exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with Construction Education Foundation of Georgia.
Move that this item be deferred with the stop in PEX.
Okay. Right. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. With that, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that deferral, six zero. Next item is Agenda Item fifteen ninety-two. This is for Commission Districts Four and Seven, Approval and Ratification of Work Completed For Expended Funds Made by H.E.H. paving for Contract Number one-one-eight-three-five-five-nine dash the two thousand nineteen L-Meg Road Resurfacing Contract in the Amount of seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents for the Use by the Department of Water, Department of Public Works. This contract consists of Patching, Milling, and Resurfacing of County Roads. Madam Chair, oh, you're on mute.
Okay, on Item fifteen ninety-two, and I do apologize, I was multitasking. Let me take a look at my notes. This particular item we can approve, so let's take fifteen ninety-two sixteen six. No, hold on, fifteen ninety-two. Let's take both items separately.
Separately, okay.
Yes, please.
All right. Well, I've already read this fifteen ninety-two out, and so.
Recommend approval as it's been heard in committee, and that is the actual recommendation on this particular item.
All right. And is there a second? Yep. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Unless there's any questions, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that one as well, six zero. Next item is Agenda Item sixteen sixty-eight. Again, this is for Commission Districts Five and Seven. Memorandum of Agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation For Additional Covington Highway Streetlights. Madam Chair?
On this particular item, I show that it was approved, but I see here that it is saying there was no recommendation. Ms. Horner, are you there? On sixteen sixty-eight?
This is more from.
Yes, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson, that was not a purchasing agenda item. I believe that is transportation, Mr. Pelton.
Okay, because I see it listed, and I, I don't have anything here, so.
I believe that item was held in committee.
And hold on just a moment, Item sixteen sixty-eight was not on my agenda, so where does it belong?
It belongs in PWI Committee, and I believe we've tried, we walked it on last meeting, and it didn't make it to the PWI Agenda.
Okay.
So we're, we're going to hear it at the next PWI Committee. I think that's how we dealt with it last week.
Understood, but it's inaccurate for it to say that there was no recommendation because it wasn't heard.
That's a true statement, yes.
Yes, so if we can correct the record, let the record reflect it, we will hear it during our next regularly scheduled PWI.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
A deferral to our next regularly scheduled PWI.
Perfect. And is there a second? Commissioner Terry? And I see that Commissioner Davis Johnson has her hand raised.
Oh, okay, yeah. My question was answered by the Chair. Thank you.
Okay, all right. With that, unless there's any other questions, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that deferral, six zero. Moving on to the next item, which was heard before the ERPS Committee. The next few were heard before the ERPS Committee. Mr. Chairman, do you want to take these together?
Yeah, the, the first two, yes. The, the third one, I thought that we addressed this one. Does it remember what we did for fifteen seventy-nine? Just says, still been us. Oh, wait, here it goes, approval. Okay. Yes, we can take the next, the next three together, please.
All right. Here we go. Agenda Item fifteen thirty-four. Change Order Number One to Contract Number one-two-three-four-zero-nine-three, DeKalb Police Promotional Selection and Testing Process Services Multi-Year For Use by the Department of Police Services. This contract consists of the Development and Administration of Employment Examinations and Promotional Testing Processes For Sworn Personnel Awarded to Industrial Organizational Solutions Incorporated Doing Business As I O S, Amount Not to Exceed fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Move for action.
All right. Agenda Item fifteen sixty-four, Change Order Number One to Contract Number one zero, excuse me, one-two-zero-zero-zero-zero, Employee Health and Benefits Consulting Services Multi-Year For Use by Finance Risk Management. This contract consists of Providing Professional Brokerage and Consulting Services Related to County Employees' Health and Welfare Benefits Awarded to Buck Global LLC, No Cost to the County.
Move for action.
All right. And then Agenda Item fifteen seventy-nine Is a Sole Source First Responder State-Specific Policy and Training Support Solution Services For Use by Fire Services, Fire Rescue. Consists of the Purchase of First Responders' Policy-Specific Training and Wellness Support Solutions Hosted Application Service and Maintenance For Two Additional Years Awarded to Lexipol LLC, Amount Not to Exceed one hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-five cents.
And move for action.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The ERPS Committee has heard all of these items and recommended approval. So with that, I will motion, I move to approve Items fifteen thirty-four, fifteen sixty-four, and fifteen seventy-nine.
All right. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. Seeing no questions from the Commission, I'll move on to the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that, six zero in the affirmative. All right, moving on. The next item is before the Fab Committee. Commissioner Rader, I'll read this out. Agenda Item fifteen forty-five. Sole Source Maintenance and Support of Benchmark Court Case Management Software. Sole Source Multi-Year Contract For Use by DeKalb County State Court. Consists of Providing Computerized Maintenance and Support of Benchmark Court Case Management Software Awarded to Pioneer Technology Group LLC, Amount Not to Exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Move to defer to our first regularly scheduled meeting in June for review in the Fab Committee.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson for that second. Unless there's any questions, Commissioners will move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that, six zero in the affirmative. Next items for the Ops Committee, and we have several of those. I think about four of those.
Yeah, you can take those all together.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started then. Agenda Item twelve twenty-three, Change Order Number One to Contract Numbers one-one-six-seven-nine-six-two and one-one-six-seven-nine-six-four For Decals For DeKalb, For County Vehicles For Use by the Departments of Police Services, Fire Rescue Services, and Fleet Management. This contract consists of Providing the Production and Installation of Vinyl Decals For County Vehicles Awarded to AKO Signs Incorporated And Fruit Art Company Incorporated. Total Amount Not to Exceed one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Move for action.
Okay. Agenda Item fifteen thirty-six. Ratification of PO Number one-two-eight-eight-two-eight-five For Runway Encouragement Mitigation, PDK eleven. Taxiway Improvements For Use by the Peachtree DeKalb Airport Consists of the Removal and Replacement of Existing Runway Materials Including Replacement of Runway Lighting and Markings As Required to Enhance Airport Safety. Recommend Approval To Ratify The Project With Astra Group LLC Amount Not to Exceed forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, forty-nine cents.
That was fifteen thirty-six.
Correct.
Okay, move for action, and could you pull fifteen thirty-nine?
Okay. All right, moving on to Agenda Item fifteen forty-one. Sole Source For City Works Maintenance and Support For the Department of Innovation and Technology Consists of Support And Updates For City Works Software Which Is Currently Being Used By Various County Departments For Their Public Asset And Work Management Solutions Awarded To Azteca Solution, excuse me, Azteca Systems LLC Amount Not to Exceed two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Move for action.
Agenda Item fifteen ninety. Cooperative Agreement For Construction Services For Use By the Department Of Recreation, Parks, and Cultural Affairs Consists Of Piggybacking Off The Competitively Let Source Well.
I'm sorry, fifteen ninety is in PEX.
In PEX. My apologies. All right. Madam Chair?
I make a, I make a motion that fifteen thirty-six and fifteen thirty-nine be approved as approved in the Ops Committee.
Okay. How about Agenda twelve twenty-three?
Okay, and twelve twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Right. Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioners, I'm sorry, information, is it twelve twenty-three, fifteen thirty-six, and fifteen forty-one?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Again, a motion by Commissioner Davis Johnson, second by Commissioner Bradshaw. Commissioners, unless there's any questions, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six zero in the affirmative for those items. Circling back, Madam Chair, we have Agenda Item fifteen thirty-nine.
Yes, that, that was recommended for approval upon receipt of the additional information from the Audit Commit, Committee. And so have we got that information from the Audit Committee?
From the, the Independent Internal Auditor, I believe, not the.
I mean, I'm sorry, yeah.
Madam Chair, we're checking right now. We don't believe we've received anything from the internal auditor.
Okay.
If you'd like to hold it, you know, that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll, we'll hold it, and if we did not hear back, we'll defer, but we'll hold it right now. And circle back to it.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a phone call.
So is the motion to table the item?
Yes.
Second.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson and Commissioner Rader on the motion to table. Going into the roll call, Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that tabling, six zero. And we'll hear back from staff. All right, moving on, Agenda Item fifteen ninety. This is before the PEX Committee. And go ahead and read this one out. Cooperative Agreement For Construction Services For Use By the Department Of Recreation, Parks, and Cultural Affairs Consists Of Piggybacking Off The Competitively Let Source Well EZIQC, Contract Number GA ST zero-three-zero-four-zero-eight-two-zero LRI For The Provision Of Repair Services For Boardwalk At Construction Lakes Park Awarded To JOC Construction LLC Amount Not To Exceed four hundred twenty-two thousand, sixty-six dollars and three cents.
Make a motion that this item be deferred with the stop in PEX.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Seeing no hands raised, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that deferral, six zero. Moving on to the next agenda items, they are before the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. Madam Chair, we have several. How do you want to take these?
We can take Item fourteen oh seven. Item fourteen fifteen. Item fourteen fifty-three. Item fifteen twenty-two. Item fifteen twenty-three. Item fifteen twenty-three. Item fifteen twenty-five. Item fifteen thirty-three. And item sixteen oh four together.
All right. All right, so beginning with agenda item fourteen oh seven, uh, we have change order number five to contract number one, zero, three, four, three, eight, one, for engineering services, multi-year contract for use by the Department of Watershed Management. Consists of providing an on-call engineering service that primarily includes engineering studies, design, and land surveying, and construction administration services for water and sewer consent decree projects in the capital improvement program. This request is to increase funding awarded to Black and Beach Corporation. Total amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, uh, nine hundred and seven dollars.
Move for action.
Agenda item fifteen fourteen, this is renewal, household hazard waste collection. Annual contract, first renewal of two options to renew. Contract number one, two, five, six, two, nine, five, for use by the Department of Public Works Sanitation. This contract consists of collecting, handling, packing, and lawfully transporting household hazard waste. Awarded to M X I Environmental Services LLC, amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Move for action.
All right, agenda item fourteen fifty-three, change order number three to contract number one, zero, eight, one, zero, seven, zero. Design build services for gravity sewer system rehabilitation, replacement, and construction. Package number two, multi-year, for use by the Department of Watershed Management. This contract consists of design build services to perform pipe rehabilitation or upsizing to the gravity sewer system. This request is to increase the contract term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Awarded to Granite Liner LLC, and again, this is contract term increase only.
Move for action.
All right. Moving on to fifteen twenty-two, change order number two to contract numbers one, one, five, one, two, three, seven, and one, one, five, one, two, four, zero, for right-of-way mowing and lawn maintenance, annual contract with two options to renew for use by Public Works Sanitation and Beautification, that's P W S B. These contracts consist of providing six rounds of mowing and lawn maintenance services at a hundred and twenty-eight right-of-way locations every six weeks, awarded to Flex Landscaping LLC, Executive Realty Solutions Incorporated. Uh, total amount not to exceed seven hundred thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Move for action.
All right, agenda item fifteen twenty-three. A P six-yard dump truck, uh, for use by Public Works Fleet Management to be used by the Department of Watershed Management. Consists of piggybacking off the competitively let statewide contract number nine, 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 dash, zero, zero, one, dash, S P D, uh, zero, 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 one, five, five, to purchase two additional six-yard dump truck, dump trucks in order to transport dirt and gravel throughout DeKalb County for the repairs and installation. Awarded to Rush Truck Centers of Georgia Incorporated, amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and eight cents.
Move for action.
All right, agenda item fifteen twenty-five, change order number one to contract numbers one, one, six, seven, one, zero, zero, and one, one, six, nine, two, seven, three. County Abatement Lot Mowing and Maintenance Services, annual contract with two options to renew for use by Public Works Sanitation and Beautification. These contracts consist of mowing and maintenance services for the county's abated locations awarded to Executive Realty Solutions Incorporated and Pro Cutters Lawn Scapes Incorporated. Amount not to exceed one hundred eighty thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars.
Move for action.
All right, agenda item fifteen thirty-three. This is a renewal, compressed natural gas, annual contract, second renewal of two options to renew. Contract number one, two, one, nine, one, five, two, for use by Public Works Sanitation. This contract consists of purchasing compressed natural gas fuel for the county's C N G vehicles on an as-needed basis, awarded to A F S DeKalb, Georgia LLC. Amount not to exceed nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Move for action.
Agenda item sixteen oh four, change order number one to contract number one, one, zero, zero, three, four, nine. Land and Easement Acquisition Services, annual contract with three options to renew for use by the Department of Watershed Management. This contract consists of providing land and easement acquisition services and other related activities to land and easement acquisition. Awarded to Atlas Technical Consultants LLC, formerly known as Moreland Alta Valley Associates LLC. Contract term increase only.
Move for action.
Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, as these items have all been heard in committee. I would ask that they are approved at this time. And just for the sake, um, item fourteen oh seven, item fourteen fifteen, item fourteen fifty-three, item fifteen twenty-two, item fifteen twenty-three, item fifteen twenty-five, item fifteen thirty-three, and item sixteen oh four is they have all been heard in the committee. Um, any item over, uh, three million has also undergone audit, so I would ask that they are approved at this time.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, thank you very much for that second. Uh, unless there's any questions, Commissioners will move into the roll call. Commissioner Raider? Uh, yes?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six, zero in the affirmative on those items. Uh, the time is nine fifty-four, and I think we have some time to get some more items taken care of. Uh, the next item is also, uh, before, uh, Public Works. Madam Chair?
We can take item sixteen fourteen and sixteen twenty-four together, please.
Right. Uh, agenda item sixteen fourteen, change order number five to contract number one, one, seven, seven, zero, eight, one, trenchless sewer line rehabilitation and construction and televis- televising inspection services. Savannah Contract Event Number Five, nine, three, seven, buyer contract number eight, eight, six, DeKalb Cooperative Agreement for use by the Department of Watershed Management. This contract consists, this contract is a cooperative agreement and consists of providing sewer line rehabilitation services to primarily include inspections, sewer line cleaning, and cured-in-place pipe. This request is to increase the contract scope of work term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and funding. This request will allow for the continuation of existing sanitary sewer line rehabilitation services awarded to InstaForm Technologies LLC, amount not to exceed twenty-nine million, one hundred ninety thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Move for action.
All right, and our next agenda item is sixteen twenty-four, change order number six for contract numbers one, zero, six, three, four, eight, uh, excuse me, let me read that one again. One, zero, six, three, uh, eight, four, four, one, zero, six, three, eight, four, one, and one, zero, eight, seven, seven, four, annual water and sewer con- uh, construction, annual contract with two options to renew for use by the Department of Watershed Management. These contracts consist of primarily providing installation and repair of water and sewer pipes in various sizes. This request seeks to increase the contract funding in term through June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Awarded to G S Construction Incorporated, uh, D, uh, S, D, and C Incorporated, the Renee Group slash, uh, Cam Ken Consulting, uh, R G I Cam Ken J V. Total amount not to exceed eighteen million, seven hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Move for action.
All right, Madam Chair?
Yes, um, both items sixteen fourteen and sixteen twenty-four remain in audit at this time. Uh, so we did not hear them in committee pending audit findings. So I would ask that we defer both of these items back to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Terry. Commissioners, seeing no hands raised for questions, I'll go ahead and go into the roll. Commissioner Raider?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that as well, uh, six, zero in the affirmative. I think we have time to maybe squeeze in one more, possibly two. Uh, this is before the PEX Committee. Agenda item sixteen twenty-eight, Mystery Valley, addition of a two-dollar capital improvement project fee.
Move deferral to our first, uh, regularly scheduled meeting in June for review by the PEX Committee.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Raiders, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Uh, seeing no questions, we'll move into the roll. Commissioner Raider?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that one as well, six, zero. Uh, Commissioners, I've got nine fifty-eight and, uh, so I guess we can try and handle these next two under the ERPs Committee.
Mr. Presiding Officer?
Yes.
Uh, well, at the appropriate time, Mr. Presiding Officer, I had a walk-on item.
All right. Um, I'll tell you what, let's take these next two items quick, uh, and then we'll do public hearing, and then we'll do the walk-on. All right, uh, agenda item thirty-three thirty-eight, to amend chapter twenty, article ten concerning domestic partnerships.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, the ERPs Committee, um, has not had a chance to, uh, pick this back up. Um, so I'll, uh, motion to defer for thirty days.
Second.
Second, thank you, Commissioner Raider. Uh, seeing no hands raised, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Raider?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six, zero in the affirmative on that one, and Commissioner Terry? Um, actually, let's see here. Um, we'll take care of this next one before PEX. Agenda item twelve fifty-eight, uh, adoption of a resolution to establish an advisory committee of the Board of Commissioners to explore and make recommendations related to affordable housing within DeKalb County.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Um, we did, um, defer this, um, with the hopes that there would be an update on the housing study.
Hmm.
And, um, so before I make my motion, I'd like to hear if, if there is an update on the housing study.
Um, point of reference.
Uh, Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Uh-huh, I think that, did you say twelve fifty-eight?
That's correct.
Uh-huh, I think that this is assigned to the PEX Committee.
I know, but it's my, my item.
Yeah, but it's assigned to the PEX Committee.
Uh, but it's coming back here right now for action.
So, um, yeah, uh, based on the fact that it is in the PEX Committee, I make the motion that this.
No, that's not head point order, excuse me. No, that's my, it's my item, and I've asked a question. Um, had the floor and asked a question, can I get an answer, please?
It would be appropriate to get a motion on the floor and then, uh, have discussion in which you can ask some questions.
All right.
I move to defer for two weeks.
Second.
All right, got a proper motion, second, uh, s- do we have, uh, Mr. Williams?
I, I can give it a shot, I can tell you that I will be meeting, I believe, tomorrow or Thursday with a Dr. Rich and Mr., uh, Mitchell. Uh, Dr. Rich is the gentleman who, uh, performed the updated, uh, housing study, um, so, um, I mean, that, that's what I can provide you at this time, Commissioner Terry, after we meet, I will have more information, and I think it's tomorrow or Thursday, but it's this week.
Okay, motion stands.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Raider?
Um, I just want to state for the record that I'm in support of this resolution to establish this advisory committee. This is an issue that is, um, a growing crisis, um, in the county as, uh, this campaign um, that is culminating today, um, has proceeded. Um, we have heard, um, an awful lot about, uh, the housing crisis in DeKalb and elsewhere. Um, the advantage of establishing an advisory committee is that it can include experts beyond the membership of, uh, the Board of Commissioners, and since this is a complex issue, I think it's appropriate, moreover, um, we have, uh, there are mechanisms and relationships that we have that could be better leveraged for, um, the pursuit of affordable housing, notably within the context of our development authority, um, our housing authority and others that should be, uh, involved in that dialogue. So, um, notwithstanding the, uh, data point associated with the, um, the, uh, Emory Study, I think that nevertheless, this merits, um, the attention and the resources that advisory committee would confer upon it. And I think it's significant that there has been no substantive action in the PEX Committee, um, since this item was deferred, uh, months ago, um, that further indicates the need for, um, uh, a special focus on this issue.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Raider, Commissioner Davis Johnson, I see your hand is raised.
Um, yes, uh, you know, first of all, I'd like to say that, um, I concur with the fact that, uh, housing, affordable housing, for our citizens and those throughout the country is of, um, concern. Um, and so, and I think that it should be addressed. It has to be addressed because people need a place to live. Uh, we are not in disagreement with that as to, as, as far as whether substantive uh, efforts have been made. Um, I will leave that to, uh, the Chair of the PEX Committee to discuss, uh, what, if any, efforts, uh, have been ma- made. So I'm going to reserve my judgment on how we should proceed. I do know that we must address, uh, the issue, but I'm going to reserve, um, my, uh, stance on how we should proceed until it is discussed further in PEX, so thank you.
All right, Commissioners, seeing no other hands raised, we'll move into the roll call. Uh, Commissioner Raider?
No.
Uh, Commissioner John, uh, Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson? Uh, I saw you say or mouth aye, uh, Commissioner Cochran Johnson, uh, and Chair votes aye as well. Uh, that is five, one in the affirmative. Okay, well, we are now at the hour, it's, uh, ten oh five, and I will ask the clerk to please read in the rules for public hearing.
Yes, sir. The DeKalb County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing during its regular business meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, at ten o'clock A M. This meeting will be conducted via teleconference Zoom. Simultaneous public access to the meeting will be available, one, via live stream on D C T V's webpage, and two, D C T V channel twenty-three dot T V. The public is invited to watch the broadcast on D C T V's Ustream link, H T T P S, colon, backslash, backslash, video, dot I B M dot com, backslash, channel, backslash, D C T V, dash, channel, dash, twenty-three. Or join the meeting using the Zoom link, H T T P S, colon, backslash, backslash, DeKalb County G A dot Zoom, dot U S, backslash, J, backslash, seven, seven, five, three, seven, seven, eight, zero, four, six. Or by telephone, six, zero, two, three, 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 zero, zero, three, two. Ca- conference code, two, one, seven, six, eight, seven. For those joining the meeting by telephone, please be aware that your phone number may be displayed to the public viewing or participating in the online meeting. The board will provide fifteen minutes of time for citizens to speak in favor of an agenda item and fifteen minutes for citizens to speak in opposition. Citizens who attend the meeting via the Zoom link above may join the public comment queue by raising their hand in the Zoom application. While citizens who attend the meeting via telephone may join the comment queue by pressing pound followed by two. There will be no comment cards, so when you are called upon, please state your name and address for the record. Also, please be conscious of speaking time so that everyone has an opportunity to provide input in the allotted time. Citizens may also email documents for inclusion into the official record by submitting such materials by nine o'clock A M. on the date of the public hearing, to publichearing@dekalbcountyga.gov.
All right, thank you, uh, Ms. McKenzie for reading that into the record. Uh, we are going to start the discussion with agenda item fifteen ninety-nine, small box discount store moratorium. We are going to start the discussion with Agenda Item fifteen ninety-nine, Small Box Discount Store Moratorium Extension. And who will be speaking to us, Mr. Baker?
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officers, members of the Board of Commissioners. As you're aware, we currently have a moratorium in place for small box discount retail. That moratorium expires on May thirty-first. The request and purpose of this public hearing is to request that we extend that moratorium to July thirty-first. The reason that we're asking this request is that we've went through the community process and getting a community involvement and participation in the draft regulations that we've written. We've also been in communication with representatives of the industry. We have provided them with copies of our draft recommendations for Chapter Twenty-seven. We're waiting to get communication and conversations with the industry reps. And this also just allows for more time for the citizens of DeKalb County to provide their comments as it relates to our draft recommendations. So during this period, where the Planning Department is continuing to work with the Law Department to finalize those recommendations as it relates to small box discount retails, we will be going back through the cycle that, that, to show you what the recommend, the final draft recommendations are, so that hopefully at our meeting in July, we'll be able to adopt new regulations as it relates to this industry. And at this time, I'll yield to the Law Department in case they have any additional comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baker, is there someone here from the Law Department? Mr. Welch.
Yes, sir.
Sir, anything you'd like to add beyond Mr. Baker has already said to us today?
No, sir, he did a great job explaining the, the point of the item, as he said, the actual underlying proposed ordinance will appear on the zoning agenda later this week, this is just the moratorium extension to give the Commissioners and the community adequate time to review and, and comment on that proposed ordinance change.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Mr. Matowski. Let's open the floor up for any public comment.
Very well, thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, and if you'd like to speak in favor of this item, item number fifteen ninety-nine, please, uh, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. At this time, Mr. Presiding Officer, I'm seeing no hands raised.
Okay, let's open the floor up to anyone wishing to speak in opposition.
And now in opposition, pound two or the raise hand feature, please. And once again, no hands raised at this time, sir.
All right, Mr. Baker, would you mind reiterating your recommendation?
Certainly, our recommendation is to extend the moratorium to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and again, Commissioners, this is a countywide ordinance, it affects all jurisdictions, small box discount store moratorium extension is the request. Is there a motion?
I motion to defer the item as requested for thirty days.
Think that the proposal is to extend the moratorium.
Extend the moratorium for thirty days as requested by Planning and Sustainability.
I believe it was to July thirty-first rather than thirty days.
Okay, if July thirty-first is what's needed, I know it's been before us several times, let's hope that.
Well, I take the thirty days, I mean, if that, if we can act on it, I'd love to see this thing done with.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Baker, is this, are, are we sure that you can, you can get it by July, or, you know, we're wanting to move it along?
Certainly, Commissioner, I want to move it along as well, I think that by extending moratorium to the thirty-first allows us that if we can get it done prior to that, we can definitely bring it before this body and get something approved before that, but again, the thirty-first definitely allows time for us to be able to coordinate with the industry representatives.
Okay, well, we'll give you your wish and hope that you'll come earlier, but as requested, so moved.
And I'm going to second that for the purpose of discussion, I have a question.
All right, Commissioner Raider, thank you for that second, Commissioner Raider, your question.
All right, so there is a draft of text amendments on our our agenda on Thursday evening at our special called Planning and Zoning Meeting. Is that version considered to be actionable?
At this particular time, I would say it is not, only because that same draft was actually sent to the industry representatives. We, they have reached out to me saying that they had received it, but they haven't given me their comments as it relates to it. I've also been told that the individuals from their national headquarters for those industries were supposed to be in town, if not this week, next week, and they wanted us to have conversations with the representatives from the headquarters.
All right, but I've also heard from folks that are eager to be able to implement plans within that sector and that, you know, how long is, have we had a moratorium here, it's been over two years, hasn't it?
That is correct.
One nineteen.
So so if we were to but nevertheless, the ordinance that is on our agenda next Thursday is in fact actionable, even if based upon just its place on the agenda, isn't that true?
I believe so, yes, because it has been advertised that this item will come up before the Board of Commissioners on Thursday.
And then an option available to us would be a deferral to a date before July thirty-first, in which case we could also rescind the moratorium, should we act in order to implement new regulations, is that correct?
I yield to law.
I see Mr. Welch has his hand raised.
Thank you, so Commissioner Raider, yes, you could rescind, but we have drafted this moratorium extension with a specific provision to address that concern, sir, at Provision Four of this proposed extension, it does state that if the effective date of any ordinance adopted by this board related to this topic is before that July thirty-first date, the moratorium will lift by operation of law, so if we've, we've prepared for that eventuality, should you a-adopt sooner than the July thirty-first, sir.
All right, thank you, and so so there is in fact a potential to deal with this at that point, and so, when have you asked industry representatives to provide their input to you? Do we expect to hear from them, for instance, on Thursday at the public hearing?
I expect that they will be in attendance, yes.
Well, I would suggest that this is a good opportunity for them to let us know what they think, I mean, I think that it would be appropriate for them to let the Board of Commissioners know what they think, since it is before us for action, because I'm inclined to take action if I hear no objection.
I will reach out to the industry representatives and make them aware of your conversations today, and encourage them to be in attendance on Thursday.
Right, so if they want us to wait, then they need to say that when we have a public hearing, again, if I don't hear anybody speaking in opposition to this particular iteration, I would certainly entertain action to, to adopt the legislation and to end the moratorium, I'm just concerned that, you know, this is, we put a great deal of effort into this. There has been a solution that y'all have represented, is well supported by the research, and it seems as though, you know, the time is ripe to act, so I'll let my motion to approve the extension stand and look forward to Thursday's meeting.
All right, thank you Commissioners, seeing no other hands raised, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that extension, six zero, in the affirmative. All right, with that, we also have public comments, I'll ask the clerk to read, read the rules.
Yes, sir. Public comments may be submitted by sending an email, no longer than one page, to publiccomments@dekalbcountyga.gov, which must be received between nine o'clock AM and ten o'clock AM on the day of the meeting. Only those emails received during the allotted time may be read aloud and broadcast. Emails received outside of the allotted time will be included in the public comments record for the next meeting after the receipt of those emails. The body of your email must include your first and last name, followed by your address. By submitting an email at any time for public comment, you agree to have your name, address, and email broadcast on the teleconference Zoom and entered in the record minutes. Abuse or profane or derogatory language will not be permitted. The public comment segment will not exceed thirty minutes, and individual emails will be read by the clerk for no more than three minutes each. The county reserves the right, at the county's sole discretion, to, one, add your email to the record minutes without reading any of it into the broadcast, or, two, add your email to the record minutes and read all or a portion of your email into the broadcast. Commissioners, we have, at my last count, at least twenty. So bear with me, I have not printed any of them out today, reading off the computer.
Okay, and again, if you would just remind us, how long will you read a public comment for?
Each one is for three minutes, and the total for all of them is thirty minutes.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. McKenzie.
I'm starting both now. Hey, first is from Mr. Ed Williams, Mr. Dr. Ed Williams, good morning Commissioners, my name is Ed Williams. I am the Chair of Concerned Citizens for Effective Government. I want to encourage everyone to vote today that have not already voted, and thank all the citizens who participate in our elections for making it happen and counting the votes. I stand with those who believe that citizens should have a voice and a choice, vote, 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 thank you. Okay, next is from Sarah Aldama. Dear Councilman, my name is Sarah Aldama, I'm a, I'm a state gardener working in Atlanta and living at four five zero seven eight Crow Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. I have also worked in partnership with the Forest Service, performing rare and native plant surveys out in the high deserts of Arizona. I am writing to you as an ordinary citizen and as a land professional. The five hundred acre old growth forest, over twice the size of Piedmont Park, is an ecological record of what all of Atlanta used to be. Companies now are seeking to reduce the parcel by half and to heavily pollute what conservation land is left, further justifying land degradation down the road. While enjoying the trails available at the park, I have seen several native plants and bird species, including what is believed to be the red cockatiel woodpecker. This endangered species relies on older pine forests like the one present within this complex old growth forest. In my line of work, it is understood that many endangered species often take refuge in the same place as a response to nearby habitat disturbance. This biologically diverse forest stands today as a wildlife sanctuary and deserves the respect of a completed peer-reviewed environmental impact study. The study already done seems to have been pushed through the system without proper accountability. Help us, the greater public, enjoy this beautiful intact park for generations to come. Let this city continue to be the city of trees. This was in reference to land disturbance permits for Project APSCT at five six one Key Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one six. Next is from Mr. Steven Binney. Good morning Commissioners, Mr. Bradshaw, I was disappointed when I was not announced as your new Charter Review Committee selection last week, but I was not surprised. Someone with high ideals and new ideas can be a dangerous appointment, like a stepping razor. Everyone who is eligible, please vote today. If we are to change our community for the better, you must vote, vote like your life depends on it, because it does. Find someone who shares your ideals and brings new ideas to the table. Last Thursday, May nineteenth, was the ninety-seventh anniversary of the birth of Malcolm X, one of our most vocal advocates for black empowerment in this country. His mother, Louise Little, became the National Reporting Secretary for the Marcus Garvey Movement, which commanded millions of followers in the nineteen twenties and thirties. His father was a Baptist minister and chapter president of the Universal Negro Improvement Association, who appealed to President Hoover that Marcus Garvey was wrongfully arrested. Earl's civil rights activism prompted death threats from the white supremacist organization Black Legion, who killed him in nineteen thirty-one, lying his body across the town's trolley tracks. Police ruled the incident an accident, some things never change, do they, or have they, let's see. While it is true that the poverty rate among blacks has fallen from thirty-four percent to twenty-two percent over the last fifty years, it is still over two and a half times the white poverty rate of eight percent. One in five blacks living in poverty is unacceptable. Thirteen point four percent of the US population is black. One point four percent, less than seventeen thousand, of the top one percent in this country are black. The top white one percent households have a median net worth of eight point three million dollars, whereas the top black one percent have a median net worth of one point two million dollars. To be in the top five percent, a black household would only net, need a net worth of three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. In contrast, white households with the same three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in net worth represent nearly thirty percent of white households in America. Helping blacks become homeowners and business owners is the most viable way to increase their net worth, but the DeKalb County government seems reluctant to do so. The DeKalb County, a majority-black county, continues to give the majority of our tax abatements to white developers and spend our tax money on improving the sewer capacity for a white-owned company like Pepsi, who finally started a black awareness program in twenty twenty-one in response to pressure after the killing of George Floyd, or Black Hall Studios owned by a white millionaire real estate developer, who immediately sold it to a multimillion-dollar white-owned investment firm. How can a black person get a break in this majority-black county? We even do our banking with Wells Fargo, who has been redlining black neighborhoods across the country and in DeKalb County for decades. If things are changing, it is certainly not fast enough. Waiting for riches to trickle down will not suffice, we must demand work and fight for economic equality. Civil rights are good, voting rights are necessary, but without economic equality, how much are they really worth? Thank you for your time and consideration. Okay, so our next one is from, let's see. I don't actually see a name, Panima at protonmail dot com. I am here today as a concerned citizen, as someone who loves nature and as someone who would hate to see the destruction of the beautiful, important Atlanta Forest. The Atlanta Forests are some of the last breeding regions for amphibians in the region, as well as important migrating grounds for waiting birds. Hundreds of species of wildlife call the Atlanta Forest home, what will happen to them if the forest is destroyed? What will happen to them if you destroy their home? They will die, and Atlanta will have contributed greatly to the climate crisis and ever-growing species extinction. The only thing that will result from the destruction of the Atlanta Forest in favor of building a cop city is that the city will become less welcoming, less filled with life, less in tune with nature, and will become more violent and more polluted. Atlanta citizens clearly don't want this forest destruction to take place. That has been made apparent from the hours of public comment. Stop favoring profit, stop favoring politics, and stop advocating for the citizens you deserve, you serve. Do not grant approval for the land disturbance permit. My name is Trey Morrow, and I'm here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to deny the land disturbance permit that Atlanta Police Department has applied for. I'm also asking the DeKalb County to cancel their land trade agreement with Black Hall Studios, who would destroy a large portion of the so-called Atlanta Forest. I'm a filmmaker by trade, I have produced and directed music videos, commercials, documentaries, and short films, and I have been doing this for over a decade now. I have never once cut down a single tree to make a film. Black Hall Studios can put their soundstage somewhere else that doesn't require destroying the local environment and killing countless frogs, snakes, squirrels, bugs, birds, and other wild animals in the process. Your constituents want the forest to remain. As far as the land disturbance permit applied for by the APD, do you really want to allow a police department that doesn't even have jurisdiction in your county to build a massive training facility here and cut down potentially hundreds of acres of precious forest to do it? Be on the right side of history. It would be a shame to have to tell your kids and grandkids that you were part of the council that allowed the forest to be destroyed. Please deny APD's permit request and cancel the land swap with Black Hall Studios, protect the forest, thank you for your time, Trey Morrow. Next is from Samuel Parker Short, five two three three Fountain Blue Court, Dunwoody residence, University of Michigan student. Next is from Samuel Parker Short, five two three three Fountain Blue Court, Dunwoody residence, University of Michigan student. Does the City of Atlanta need a new training facility for its public safety officers? Yes. Should that facility be built at the expense of the Cal residents? No. The deal that has been crafted takes advantage of the low-income and underserved communities surrounding the South Atlanta Forest. This deal was not crafted with the interests of the Cal residents in mind. The City of Atlanta has imposed a financial and social burden upon our county, targeting an underserved part of South Cal to save itself money while pursuing better services for their own city. Our Board of Commissioners should look to pursue better services for our residents and should advocate for the interests of the Cal residents, whose voice has not been fully considered in this process. Please use your voice and your vote to stop this project and advocate for those who represent instead of another government entity. The cab is being taken advantage of in this deal, and the community is la- is loudly saying no. Advocate for your constituents, not the cit- Atlanta City Council and the APF. Samuel Parker Short. Okay, next is from Isabel Martinez regarding the land disturbance permits. To whom it may concern, the land disturbance permit is in violation of the requirements of the legislation. The community has not been given site plans, inadequate environmental testing not conducted. You will be perpetrating, perpetuating the environmental racism that ravages the South and country as a whole. Next is from Christian Wetzel, note to permit one two four five five six four. I'm a DeKalb County resident that vehemently stands against the tree cutting and land clearing in South Cal. Clearing an undeveloped green space to make room for an unnecessary police training grounds stands against every tenant of environmental stewardship and community care. When the last forest is gone and the last creek runs dry, our children would ask us why we let this happen. Not one tree and not one blade of grass. I write, comment this from outside the closed doors of this public meeting. Christian Wetzel. Our next comment is from Sam Severin, Police Training Facility. Hello, thank you for taking my comments. I'm writing in opposition to the police training facility. Tearing down the forest to make room for this facility will create the conditions for flooding. This will affect neighborhoods of all incomes. Furthermore, we have seen no evidence that harsher policing reduces crime. What we do know reduces crime and affordable housing, fully-funded schools, and social services. If the intent is to reduce crime, building this facility would not produce those results. From Brittany Wages, do not approve permit one two four five five six four. I'm writing from outside the public meeting to ask the Board of Commissioners not to approve the land disturbance permit for APF. The Cal County residents were not given a chance to have their voices heard on the destruction of our natural spaces. APS plans do not benefit the citizens of the Cal County or Metro Atlanta as a whole and would instead subject us to increased pollution, noise, and overly militarized police presence. The environmental impacts alone should be enough to reject this proposal. South DeKalb isn't a dumping ground for destructive projects that Atlanta officials falsely claim a need for. Our children deserve to grow up in the city and the forest that we chose as our homes. Brittany wages the Cal County residents. Next is from Johnny, Johnny Lukewarm. The Cab Board of Commissioners should not approve permit one two four five five six four. The APD training facility has made its way through the approval process without remote democratic support. Worse yet, APD has lied about the proposals' environmental impact, promising environmental and social disturbances far beneath reality. Granting permit one two four five five six four will be ruinous for Atlanta communities and will further our cities slide into violent cultural hell. Stop city, stop cop city. Do not approve permit one two four five five six four. Our next is from Allison Clark, Support for Public Safety Training Center Permitting. Good morning, I'm writing as a resident of the Boulder Walk community. The community sharing a property boundary with the City of Atlanta property slated to become the new Atlanta Public Safety Training Center. The Training Center facility is in many ways the best option for our community in that it is being constructed as a campus with public use aspects that will allow for community engagement, usable trails, and added connectivity. Even more, the development means that the current bomb range located five hundred feet from our community will move a half mile away with barriers to help mitigate noise impacts on the surrounding communities and bullet catch devices to allow for a more environmentally friendly operation. Community input has led to the removal of explosives from the sites, as well as site plan updates that allow the facility to fit seamlessly into the community and work to the benefit of those living in close proximity. I know there has been opposition to the project, primarily from those who wish to see the land preserved as green space and those who are concerned about the state of policing in the United States. While I understand the considerations of these groups and even share some of their concerns, I feel that it's unrealistic to expect the land to remain unused and/or allow for continued trespass of individuals treating the property as public land. Instead, the projected use incorporates usable green space and legal public access. As for the state of policing in the United States, there are some serious problems that undoubtedly must be addressed as the bad acts of some have exposed challenges in policing. The solution requires the most robust training possible and enhance the engagement between community and police. This state-of-the-art facility allows for just that and is a step in the right direction. While I am not writing in my capacity as such, it is appro- appropriated for me to disclose that I serve as the Chair of the Community Stakeholder Advisory Committee for this development. Our work has allowed and will continue to allow the project to move forward with community input as a prioritized consideration, thus allowing the impacted community to shape the project in a way that can work for all parties involved. With that, I urge you to vote in favor of the permits required to move this project forward. Allison Clark, Chair Southwest DeKalb Neighborhood Alliance, sixteen ninety-one Boulder Walk Drive, Atlanta, Georgia. Next is from Erin Yast. Dear DeKalb County Board of Commissioners, my name is Erin Yast, and I live at twenty-four Covington Highway, Avondale Estates in DeKalb County. I'm writing to ask you to deny the Atlanta Police Foundation's application for a land disturbance permit to destroy important forests in Southwest DeKalb. Permit one two four five five six four. Atlanta is a city in the forest, but we cannot keep this identity if we do not preserve our vital natural resources. This land plays an integral role in the region's ecosystem, and destroying acres of old growth forest is reckless. Furthermore, the Atlanta Police Foundation has not completed the legally binding requirements put forward in the original city ordinance proposing this construction, such as noise disruption, environmental impacts, and/or engagement of local partners. I believe that no one is above the law and ask you to enforce these mandates before approving a permit for the APF. Finally, I ask you to think of the future of DeKalb County and its residents. The Cal County is not a dumping ground for the City of Atlanta's problems. The Cal County's forests and suburbs are not a shooting range. The Cal County's residents come before bulldozers. If you, like me, believe this and should be true, then I ask you to vote to deny the Atlanta Police Foundation's application for a land disturbance permit. Thank you for your consideration, Erin Yast. The next is from Brittany Wages. My address is eighteen sixty-six Iona Drive, Southeast Atlanta. I'm writing from outside the public meeting to ask the Board of Commissioners not to approve the land disturbance permit for APF. The Cal County residents were not given a chance to have their voices heard on the destruction of our natural resources. APS plans do not benefit the citizens of DeKalb County or Metro Atlanta as a whole and would instead subject us to increased pollution, noise, and overly militarized police presence. The environmental impacts alone should be enough to reject this proposal. South DeKalb isn't a dumping ground for destructive projects that Atlanta officials falsely claim a need for. Our children deserve to grow up in the city and the forest that we chose as our homes. Brittany wages the Cal County resident. Next is from Jordan Kiesler. Dear DeKalb County Board of Commissioners, my name is Jordan Kiesler, and I live at twenty-four Covington Highway, Avondale Estates. I'm writing to ask you to deny the Atlanta Police Foundation's application for a land disturbance permit to destroy important forests in Southwest DeKalb. Atlanta is a city in the forest, but we cannot keep this identity if we do not preserve our vital natural resources. This land plays an integral role in the region's ecosystem, and destroying acres of old growth forest is reckless. Furthermore, the Atlanta Police Foundation has not completed the legally binding requirements put forward in the original city ordinance proposing this construction, such as noise disruption, environmental impacts, and/or engagement of local partners. I believe that no one is above the law and ask you to enforce these mandates before approving a permit for the APF. Finally, I ask you to think of the future of the Cal County and its residents. Cal County is not a dumping ground for the City of Atlanta's problems. The Cal County's forests and suburbs are not a shooting range. The Cal County's residents come before bulldozers. If you, like me, believe this is and should be true, then I ask you to vote to deny the Atlanta Pu- Police Foundation's application for a land disturbance permit. Thank you for your consideration, Jordan Kiesler. Next is Elaine Adama, the APSTC Project. My name is Elaine Adama, fifty seventy-eight Crow Drive, Smyrna. I have grown up with a love of nature and environment too many children are being deprived of. The loss of five hundred acres of continuous old growth forest for commercial gain is, in my opinion, a criminal act against the next generation. The short-term gains of clearcutting this remaining patch of forest against the long-term benefits are clear to see. The biodiversity and endangered plants and the animals that call this land home will be lost to the greater Atlanta area. The environmental impact study was poorly done with no peer review worth mentioning. You don't need a PhD to see this as a bad idea, chasing short-term gains. This old growth forest can become an environmental laboratory for Georgia Tech and seed bank for the future. Atlanta does not need another movie studio. The police need a training facility, but not here. Keep the greater Atlanta area a green space, living in harmony and respect with the natural world. Ma- mankind, with all our knowledge, cannot rebuild an old growth forest once it's gone. Protect our future sincerely, Elaine Adama. Next is from Aline de la Torre, defend the Atlanta Forest. I vehemently oppose a land permit to construct a police training facility in an environmentally sensitive area. You have heard over and over again from thousands of Metro Atlanta residents to not move forward. I urge you to listen. Aline de la Torre, twenty-four oh seven Sherbrook Drive, Northeast Atlanta. Next is from Juliana Moni, public land use for police training facility. Thank you for receiving my comments. I'm commenting in regards to APD's appropriation of Intrenchment Creek Park public land for a cop training facility. Not only has the city egregiously bypassed the proper channels of approval for appropriating this land, but the proposed use of the land itself is inherently harmful and dangerous. We need the cloud cover of the trees on this land. We need this area of natural wetland as a last habitation for many animals that reside there. The chemical runoff alone from a police training facility will be extremely harmful to the animals nearby, as well as contaminate the water there. At this juncture, I would appreciate our city officials showing that they actually care about something more than corporate money and clout. We must drink of our future, think of our future as a city. What are we planting for future generations? Juliana Moni, six six Howard Street, Southeast Atlanta. Next is from Christian Wes Wetzel. I believe I read one from him already. I'm a DeKalb County resident that vehemently stands against the tree cutting and land clearing in South DeKalb. Clearing an undeveloped green space to make room for unnecessary police training grounds stands against every tenant of environmental stewardship and community care. When the last forest is gone and the last creek runs dry, our children would ask us why we let this happen. Not one tree and not one blade of grass. I write this comment from outside the closed doors of this public meeting. Next is from Sam Severin, Police Training Facility. Tearing down the forest creates the conditions for deadly floods. The police training facility is a great idea if we want our homes, schools, and business to be destroyed in a flood. In addition, there is no evidence that a more militarized police force has any impact on lowering crime. There is no upside to this project. Samantha Severin, two one eight five Second Avenue, Decatur, Georgia. Next is from Savannah Denning, deny land disturbance permit one two four five five six four. I have been an Atlanta resident for eight years and a Decatur resident for four. I'm a certified permacultural designer, a certified sustainable urban agricultural technician, and I hold a dual degree in political economics and environmental horticulture. I've spent the last seven years involved in green industry and sustainability efforts in this area. I'm asking the Board to deny land disturbance permit one two four five five six four, which allows tree clearing in the south, excuse me, South River Forest. This land, perhaps the last and largest unprotected wilderness area inside the perimeter, has intact ecological function. It stores rainwater in its deep untouched debris layer, preventing flooding of all the surrounding communities. Grading removes, destroys, and compacts the living soil. The deep forest condition the air cooling temperatures by as much as twenty degrees. These trees are literally the stored carbon breaths of our ancestors. The land surrounding them is sacred and has a deep wounded history of being stolen, becoming a site of oppression as plantations, then as a prison farm, and now through environmental racism and the polluted soils and waters. Are we supposed to accept the destruction of this forest? No. The forest is trying to heal this history of oppression with an interconnected rite of life. I have personally seen puddles on a foot trail in this forest so full of life that they contain hundreds of tadpoles nearing adulthood. Join your part to save this treasure by saying no to land disturbance permit one two four five five six four is an action I believe this board must take for the safety of our peoples and our descendants. I have included pictures so that you can see what you are choosing. A weaving and dis- and stitching depicting the land hung in the forest as an art exhibition. Two, the for- two through three, the forest after degrading, you can see a priority tree which has been saved in further detail in picture three, demonstrating the inadequ- inadequacy of the ordinance in protecting life. This is what approving LPD one two four five five six four will do. Number four, the forest, this site slated for destruction, and is not one thousand feet from the raised site in pictures two and three. This is what denying LDP one two four five five six four will protect. Next is from Allison Clark, Support for Public Safety Training Center Permitting. The below email for public comment was submitted on the premise that there would be an agenda item hearing on this item. If that is incorrect, please save this comment for the appropriate time and/or I will re-submit it when applicable. Okay, this was read already. Next is from B Johnson, no permits for the APD. Good morning, I am concerned citizen writing to express my complete opposition to the proposed and disturbance permits, land disturbance permits requested by the APD in DeKalb County. The proposed project of the APD cop city is not the kind of project we want in our county or any county. The forest and land that would be disturbed are crucial for containing storm waters and soil erosion and for mitigating the effects of pollution and climate change. Furthermore, this is not a project that supports our community. We want funding for education, healthcare, and housing, not an increasingly militarized police force. The Cal County must decide which side of history it wants to be on, that of the community, the earth, the injustice, or that of destruction, violence, and oppression. I ask you to deny these permits to the APD to choose bravely what is right for this community and this land. Sincerely, B Johnson. Next is from Autumn Rivers, concerns about impact on elders and historical sites of significance to Native Atlantans and Native Americans. Hello, my name is Autumn, and I'm a lifelong resident of Atlanta. Currently, I stay upriver and still in East Atlanta Village, but my grandparents and other elders, who have recently been hospitalized, stay downriver in the district in Conley-Ellinwood, Indicator. Yesterday, my water tasted sulfur, sulfuric. And it felt like a preview to what's to come in this community if we allow cop city to destroy our watershed. Water is essential to life, and I noticed that my older is already depend on bottled water instead of our natural resources. I know that if this project goes through, it will affect the water that they have bathed in, cooked with, used to clean their bodies before they take intravenous medication for insulin and other ailments. I am pleading with the Commissioners and next generation of re- representatives to stop this project in its tracks and consider creating inherited sites, like the Cultural Heritage corridors of the sea islands or the state park with its site instead of a cop training facility. For more on the historical significance of this area- For more on the historical significance of this area, please check out this episode of Archive Atlanta. About the old prison farm and its history as a burial ground for zoo animals, a prison labor camp, and also a site of Indian removal. As an African American human rights activist, archaeologist, and environmentalist. I am horrified still be ma- having to make public comments about this situation. It seems abundantly clear that the scientists, elders, and youth are together in saying, stop, stop, stop cop city now. I hope you will listen to the podcast to learn more about the significance of the space and why it should not be degraded. Start at about fifteen minutes to hear about how the history of zoos in Atlanta connected to this site. Thank you for your time. Let me trust we have thirty six seconds left. And I think I can get through one more. This is from Justin Taylor. You have got to be kidding me. How dare you let such an egregious thing that is in violation of your own laws go on? All it takes is you issuing an injunction on some maneuver that will prevent the project from moving forward. I want to be as civil as possible, so this comment makes it in, but god dang, it's so hard not to cuss a food streak at y'all. What is the point of all this right to address? Commissioners, that ends the time, thirty minute time allowance. Commissioner, you're on, okay.
Ms. McKenzie, thank you so much for reading the public comments. Commissioner Terry, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I just, uh, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Real quickly, I just never miss a moment for a learning opportunity. I just wanted to acknowledge that we did get a lot of public comments. Asking the commissioners to take action on something that we actually have no vote in, in, in regards to. So land disturbance permits are issued by the planning department, which is solely within the administration. So just wanted to. Take a point, just a clarity there because that's an important, you know, procedural aspects. But appreciate the public comments we received today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Appreciate that. Uh, commissioners, um, I'm going to go ahead and pick up where we left off, which is Agenda fifteen forty three. This is before the Ops Committee. And, uh, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and read this one out. Agenda item fifteen forty three, a resolution of the DeKalb County Governing Authority to adopt a vision and transition.
What page, what page?
Uh, middle of the page, page fifteen. Pardon me, actually the bottom of the page, last item on page.
Yeah, I got, I have it.
Okay, ready, here we go. Uh, Agenda item fifteen forty three. A resolution of the DeKalb County Governing Authority to adopt a vision and transition plan for all library landscapes in DeKalb County by twenty twenty three.
Okay, um, this is the Presiding Officer, I make a motion that this item be deferred. Is, uh, recommended by the Ops Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw, for that second. Uh, with, unless there's any comments, commissioners, Commissioner Rader.
I just have a question. Previously, this item had been recommended for approval and now it is recommended for deferral. What is left to be done in order for us to consider this for action?
Yeah, there were, um, um, yeah, there was, uh, various questions that was asked in the Ops Committee. Uh, that has not been answered and it, it has a lot to do. With, uh, the cause, the procedure, etc. And so that's the reason it is coming back, uh, to the Ops Committee for further discussion. And of course, uh, you are, you are invited to attend, uh, that next meeting.
All right, Commissioner Rader, thank you for your question. Uh, next is Commissioner Terry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This, um, item was, um, one that I introduced. And, uh, yes, it was deferred for, uh, thirty days in the Ops Committee and, um. There were questions at one of the previous committee meetings. Um, those, uh, answers have been provided, um, in advance of the committee meeting, but it was deferred for thirty days. And so, you know, I think, you know, any, uh, Ops members that need more details, um. Or information, uh, there's plenty of time, I think, to address those issues, but all the responses have been given in writing. So please, if there's any follow up between now and then, um, reach out to myself, uh, facilities, uh, management, library. Uh, I think everyone has been, you know, involved in, in this process up to this point. So appreciate the opportunity to come back to the Ops Committee in thirty days to, um. Finalize those questions and any concerns, um, and hopefully moving forward from there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Commissioner Davis Johnson, I see your hand raised.
And, 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 and I think, and I don't have my notes in front of me that, um, uh, we talked about an RFP. Uh, to, um, uh, to be put together for this item as well. And that would take, um, and, and so the thirty days was to come back to give an update.
All right, uh, we have a proper motion and second, and unless there's any other questions, commissioners, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Hi.
Commissioner Terry.
I.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
I.
And Chair votes I as well. That's six zero on the deferral for fifteen forty three. Uh, moving on to. Our next page. Uh, top of page sixteen, uh, this is before the ERPS Committee, Agenda Item, uh, twelve ninety nine. A resolution requesting the governing authority of DeKalb County amend chapter fifteen of the code of the DeKalb County, of DeKalb County, Georgia. As revised in nineteen eighty-eight to provide for the mandatory use of video surveillance systems at convenience stores and for other purposes. Uh, Commissioner Terry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Um, we did hear this in the ERPS, um, the previous, um, committee before last. Um, and I, I, Commissioner Cochran Johnson, um, do, I think maybe the Law Department was looking over some. Final revisions, um, want to see if we can get an update and I can, we can make the motion accordingly.
Absolutely. I do think that the items should come back to committee for a final discussion. However, um, just Friday, um, Attorney Phillips sent over, uh, a red line. Uh, during our discussion, of course, um, after there was discussion. Uh, by our chief, by Chief Ramos as it relates to FUSIS, which is a new system. That allows police to monitor any location in real time from even a handheld device. Uh, we wanted to update this particular legislation. Because that is the wave of the future as you're seeing with also the product we discussed called Greenlight. That is, uh, active in Detroit. So I do think it would be appropriate so that there can be, um, adequate discussion on, uh, the integration of technology. Being mandatory for businesses that are deemed to be high risk.
Very good. Thank you. Um, so we'll, um, I think, is it deferral for, uh, is it, you want it two weeks for now and?
I, I think that should be adequate and, um, I will send along the, um. The newly updated copy to everyone and, uh, we can all come in prepared to have the discussion and hopefully. Um, flesh out anything remaining and move this forward because, um, I believe it's very important for DeKalb.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, so yes, with that being said, I'll move to defer for, uh, two weeks. And we'll, um, uh, take this up at the next ERPS meeting, um, top of the agenda.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Bradshaw, thank you very much. Commissioners, unless there's any questions, we'll go into the roll call. Commissioner Rader.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
I.
And Chair votes I as well, uh, six zero in the affirmative to defer for two weeks. Uh, a note from staff, Agenda Item fifteen nineteen has already been approved and so that's going to be. Removed from this agenda item or from our agenda packet. I'm going to move on to Agenda fifteen sixty, uh, which is, uh, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of meeting April twenty six, twenty twenty two.
Prove approval.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson, uh, go into the roll. Commissioner Rader.
What?
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Terry.
I.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
I.
Chair votes I on that as well, six zero in the affirmative. Moving on, uh, we have Agenda Item, uh, fifteen thirty seven, which was heard before the Fab Committee. This is for, um. Uh, change order number one to contract number one zero eight nine eight nine nine. For maintenance and support of benchmark court case management software for use by DeKalb County State Court. Consists of providing computerized maintenance and support of benchmark court case management software. Awarded to Pioneer Technology Group LLC, amount not to exceed one hundred forty seven thousand seventy dollars. Commissioner Rader.
Um, the committee reviewed this item on the tenth of May. Its recommendation was to approve and my motion is to approve.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Uh, seeing no hands raised, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Terry.
I.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
I.
And Chair votes I on that as well, six zero in the affirmative. Uh, the next item is before the Public Works. Uh, an infrastructure committee. Madam Chair, I'll read this one out. Agenda Item fifteen forty, low bid invitation number twenty one dash one zero one four seven six, seven six. Seminole Road landfill cell construction, phase three, unit two, cell three N. And unit four cells, four N and five N for use by Public Works sanitation. Consists of the construction of cells, uh, three N, four N, and five N at Seminole Road landfill. To continue providing waste disposal capacity for the residents of DeKalb County. Recommend award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Morgan Corporation. Amount not to exceed twenty one million, one hundred eighty five thousand, nine hundred forty three dollars and forty five cents. Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, item fifteen forty, um, has been heard in committee. It has also undergone audit, is that is our standard practice for items that are above three million. Of course, this allows us to expand and begin the development of a new cell at Seminole landfill. And I would ask that as the committee has done their due diligence, that the item is approved as it is the recommendation of the committee.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Again, motion and second properly made for the approval of Agenda Item fifteen forty. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Rader.
Yes, um, could, uh, Ms. Warner tell us what the nature of the disqualification of the additional bidder was?
One moment, Commissioner, Ms. Warner is getting her notes.
Thank you. And I know that's non-responsive, but what was the, um, the, you know, the reason that they were non-responsive?
Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, and, uh, to Commissioner Rader's direct question, so Ms. Warner is, uh, researching through her notes to get to that response. So if you want to, we can either table this or, well, she finds it.
Right, uh.
Or she could provide it subsequent to, to the action.
I'll move to table or, um, I mean, perhaps we can, the other question that I would have had was, uh. Sort of the per cell cost of the previous, um, phase, since this is essentially, uh, a single bidder. I'd be interested to know what premium that we are paying, um, if any, on the construction of the new cells. Compared to the construction of previous, uh, cells in phase, I guess, one. Of, uh, unit. Or, uh, phase two of unit two. So, uh, those will be my questions. Um, you can. Uh, I'll defer to the committee's recommendation on the action, but I would like to know those two answers.
We can get, we can get your written answer, uh, within the next twenty four hours, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Rader. Uh, Commissioner Terry, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I did want to note, um, in the agenda packet, um, there was reference to a market survey. And, um, for companies that did not bid, um, noted that there were, um, workload and scheduling issues. And then the, that was for three, and then the fourth, uh, vendor, potential vendor, um, said those currently, um, outside their capacity. But they did all say that they would bid in the future. So I think, you know, just, um, understanding that it seems there's. You know, maybe at least six different vendors sort of in this market. Um, you know, obviously would encourage us to keep working with the, uh, you know, sort of the whole gamut of the industry. To ensure the best competitive price, but I did want to note that for the vendors said that they were interested in bidding, um, in the future. But I think currently they indicated that they didn't have the capacity. So I just wanted to note that.
That's correct. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Commissioner Cochran Johnson, I see your hand raised.
Yes, I also wanted to add in terms of the cost when you refer, um, Commissioner Rader to a premium. Um, what we've seen, we've given some discussions to the price increases that we've noticed. And what we're seeing on average is about three to five percent. And primarily based upon our discussion due to costs that is often associated with the materials. But again, um, I know that COO Williams has indicated that he'll provide a formal response.
Yes, ma'am.
But I will look forward to receiving that formal response, but I did want to reply. And I see Ms. Warner now has her hand up, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Acknowledged. Go ahead, Ms. Warner.
Okay, the, um, second bid was deemed non-responsive because it actually arrived late. Past the deadline for receipt.
Is that after the deadline had been extended?
That was after the deadline had been extended.
So we received, uh, insufficient bids, the deadline was extended, and finally after that. They didn't. Submit within that time period.
They did not submit by the advertised or publicized date and time of opening.
Well, they didn't submit within the advertised time of the first extension. Is that right?
Um, we don't deem non-responsive when something is extended. But they did not submit before the final date and time.
And I guess what I'm saying is that was it within the department's discretion to further extend the deadline? Or was, uh, did that extension have to be made before you received a late bid, so to speak?
The extension has to be made before you receive a late bid.
All right, um, then I'll be very interested to see what, if any, premium, um, over the previous, uh. You know, cost of this type of cell expansion, since it does seem to be a relatively standard. Um, you know, iterative process of expanding the, uh, individual units. So if you would provide me sort of a historical cost of this type of work so that we can see if this single. this single bidder is, you know, comparable to the premiums. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Raider. I noticed that Commissioner Davis Johnson has her hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I would just like to know if we sent the item to audit. And I responded, and I'm assuming
Yes, ma'am.
voting on it, that it was, everything was appropriate. What does audit, if we're sending items to audit? I would just like to know, um, what pretty much are they looking at? When they send back uh their findings?
So, Mr. Presiding Officer to Commissioner Davis Johnson, I can
Yes.
attempt to respond just based on experience. The first direct answer to your question, was this sent to audit and approved? The answer to that is yes.
Yeah.
What are the things that they look for? Typically, they have looked for ensuring that we don't have issues of unbalanced bids. Where there may be a bid where bids for certain components may seem to be at least artificially low. And then others higher with the intent, this is when it's a malicious act. With the intent over time to either get change orders or know for a fact that the higher priced items are going to drive the cost. And so they secure a low bid, but then ultimately make more than than was originally appropriate. They also look to ensure that we are able to defend the purchase. So if we're saying that we want to spend ten million dollars on X, what the audit likes to do is to ensure that we are able to quantify our needs over that period of time. And then it comes up to, you know, at least very close to that ten million dollars. So, you know, the the long and short is what they are looking for is a justification that the vendor that has been selected has submitted a bid in accordance with, you know, their standards and and our our standards as well, that it is a balanced and fair bid. And that we have been able to articulate our needs in a way that is commensurate with the actual response. Does that make sense?
It 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 does, and thank you for that clarification.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And another thing that we've found that is not systemic, but yeah, it should definitely be noted. It's also the mathematical errors that sometimes exist within contracts. To date, I believe we have as of last year, there were thirteen million dollars that we were able to recoup because either there were in some instances mathematical and calculation issues. And also pricing, as Mr. Williams expressed, where I call it slow balling and later raising the price. So when we see prices that tend to be excessively low, then we call the vendor back because you want to ensure the integrity of the bid so that it doesn't change later. But I really wanted to point out the dollars because we we caught quite a few mathematical errors. And thank you so much, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Absolutely, Commissioner. With that said, we do have currently a properly made motion and second. Commissioners, if unless there's any other questions, and if everyone's comfortable, we'll move forward with the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, that's six zero in the affirmative for agenda item fifteen forty. Next item is before the PEX Committee, and this is agenda item eleven ninety. This is Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs Ten Year Master Plan. Is there someone from?
Um, the committee did make, did review that previously has been deferred and for some additional commentary to be integrated into the plan, that commentary was reviewed at the most recent meeting of the PEX Committee and the recommendation was to approve. Since the Chair is not here, I would move approval.
All right, thank you.
A little second.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
As amended most recently.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, Commissioners, unless there are any comments, I'll go ahead and move into the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
Right, and Chair votes aye on that as well, six zero in the affirmative for agenda item eleven ninety. We're getting towards the end. Next, we have before the PEX Committee, agenda item fifteen twenty four, NH Scott Recreation Center donation from Atlanta Hawks. Commissioner Raider or Commissioner Davis Johnson?
The committee considered that and the recommendation was to approve. My motion is to approve.
A second.
Right. Thank you, Commissioners, for that properly made motion second. Seeing no questions, we'll go into the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six zero in the affirmative on that. Commissioners, I know we're at the end of the printed agenda. We do have, I think, two things we need to talk about. We have a item that was tabled at the beginning that we need to pull back off. And then we also have a request for a walk-on agenda item from the administration. Let me go back to my notes for that.
Fifteen thirty nine.
Thank you very much. Going back to agenda item fifteen thirty nine.
Page ten.
I appreciate that too. Madam Deputy.
Yeah, I I put a clip on it because I knew we needed to come back to it.
All right. All right. So we have before the Ops Committee, agenda item fifteen thirty nine. I'll read it out one more time. Low bid invitation number twenty one dash one zero one four seven four, purchase of tires, including recapping and repair, annual contract with two options to renew. For Public Works Fleet Management, consists of the purchase of new tires and tubes, tire recapping and or repair services. Recommend award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders, Action Tire Company, Atlanta Commercial Tire, Best Drive Tire LLC, J and R Tire Incorporated, Next Tire Commercial Incorporated, and Southern Tire Mark LLC. Total amount not to exceed three million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Madam Chair.
I like to make a motion to take it off the table.
Okay.
First.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Raider. We'll go ahead and do the roll right quick. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Okay. All right. Well, we have a five zero vote to take it off the table. Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, I make a motion that this item be deferred because we have not heard back from audit. And so it would be deferred.
And okay, second by Commissioner Raider. Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, we'll call the roll. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Okay, we'll go with that. We've got a five zero vote for the deferral properly motion. All right, final item before us today. Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer. I have an item I would like to, with the board's indulgence, be able to walk on and defer to PEX, I believe would be the appropriate committee. And the item is an appointment to the Fulton de Cab Hospital Authority of a Mr. Bernard Taylor, Senior Esquire. It's a thirteen A appointment, and the reason that I want to go on and walk it on and have the deferral, if at all possible, as everyone is aware, we're in the process of negotiating with Grady on a on a number of funds, not the least of which is their long-term contract. So it'll be important to have the board staff with the representatives from Fulton County or from Fulton, but as well as Fulton, have DeKalb County, I apologize. So Mr. Taylor, I would like to present him as a nominee, thirteen A from the CEO.
Commissioners, I believe we need to have a motion to add an agenda item.
I make a motion to add.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry.
I just have a question.
Commissioner Raider.
Who currently sits in the seat that you're nominating this for?
I I believe it's vacant, Commissioner Raider, but I'll confirm that.
Who would previously sit in that seat then, if you would provide that?
We will. We will.
As well as
The termination.
Dr. Basada Henry.
Okay.
Just like
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, Commissioners, again, this is a motion to add an item to the agenda. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson. And and Chair votes aye, that's five zero in the affirmative for the motion to add to the agenda. And now we would need a motion, I guess, to defer.
Yes. Yeah, I make a motion that that this item is added to the agenda, the appointment of Bernard Taylor Senior Esquire for the board for Grady, for Fortin County, I mean, Fortin K I Hospital Authority, and that this item be deferred for stuff in PEX.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Is there a possibility of this being on the agenda on Thursday, or is it going to be? Or will we have to defer it?
That would be our hope, and I'll be having that conversation with the Chair of PEX, but that 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 is our desire, Commissioner Raider.
All right, thank you.
And is it, would that be both candidates?
Yes, ma'am. That's our desire.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, we have a proper motion and second to defer to PEX. Unless there's any other questions, I'll go ahead and move to the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, that's five zero in the affirmative on that one. As I mentioned earlier, we do not have an executive session scheduled for today, and so with that, we'll move into comments from the board, and we'll just
I have some items.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Let's go ahead and make a motion to amend.
I have four items to to add. And my first, I'd like to make my first motion to add an item. Can I can I make a motion and add all of these at once, or do I need to do them individually?
I believe we need to go through those individually. So we'll, we'll do a motion to amend the agenda, and then we'll do the motion to put it on the agenda for each one. So
And when you do, you'd please say what the subject matters.
Yeah, okay, I have a motion to add an agenda to allocate funds, District Five appropriations for the American Rescue Plans to allocate that for my senior home repair.
Second.
All right. Go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, five zero to add the District Five ARP request.
Okay, and I make a motion that that we allocate one hundred thousand dollars of the American Rescue Plan Funds reserved for District Five appropriation in District Five, the senior home repair programs for the purposes of providing home repairs to District Five seniors who have been impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic.
All right. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Terry. We'll go into the roll. Commissioner Raider.
These just came to us at eleven twenty one, is that right?
Yes. I mean, yeah, I'm just walking them on in their allocations.
All right, but you're asking us to take action on them with?
I am. I am because because of the need.
Just, I can't even open the items on the iPad, so I'm kind of flying blind here.
Okay, so I am allocating one hundred thousand dollars of my American Rescue Funds. A reserve for district five appropriations to District Five Senior Home Repair Programs for purposes of providing home repairs to District Five seniors who have been impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Yeah, I I don't have any issue with it. I just can't see those items and they were, I and you say that they weren't circulated in advance. You just circulated them now. Is that correct?
Well, I had four that, yeah, I just circulated, but it's coming from District Five.
And again, I have no issue with them. I just can't see them. So at a loss to be able to vote intelligently. Sorry.
Well, I mean, they're my funds. I mean, if they're, the funding source is
Well, I don't disagree. I'm just being asked to vote.
And they're for the senior home program.
Are you looking for a second?
Looking for a second.
Okay, second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. And this is again, just for clarity, motion for the allocation, I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No.
Okay, so the agenda item that I have here that is titled Senior Home Repair Program includes a seventy five thousand dollar park bond fund for
No.
Arabia Mountain.
No, that's a different one.
I'm just saying that that's the one that is titled that. So let me see if I can find another one that's titled differently, that has a different purpose.
Okay. So so I have four. I have four walk-ons.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, so then the one that's titled Ragsdale House appears to be fifty thousand for summer aquatic programming.
No.
And then the one that is South DeKalb YMCA is for the Youth Service Commission. And then the one that is titled Youth Service Commissioners.
Well, I tell you what, let me
Is also
because I don't I don't know how they're sent or how they're titled. Let me resend them and I will come back. And because all of them, I don't know how they were sent, but I do know what the context what the context
There will be two of them that are Youth Service Commissioners, just so you know.
Oh, okay. Well, let me resend them and I will come back. After, well, I mean, this is the end of, let me see. Hold hold on one second, please. We are rescinding them now.
I do not believe that any of, let me just see which one's missing.
I have four. One is for the Youth Commission, one is for Arabia Mountain, Rexdale House allocation, another is for the senior aquatic aquatics program. The last one is for and one is for the one hundred thousand dollars for the District Five Senior Home Repair Program. For the District Five Senior Home Repair Program.
Guys, I see all of them except the Senior Home Repair one.
Yes, one is there twice.
That's right, we have a duplicate on the Youth Commission one.
Right, and there is no Senior Home Repair item.
Okay, you're sending the Senior Home Repair now, so that I can continue, okay, the Senior Home Repair is being sent right now. So that I can discuss the others, let me discuss this one. This is saying home repairs sent. Okay, Senior Home Repair has just been sent. Okay, you should have the Senior Home Repair.
Yeah, I wish that were true.
I do too.
Commissioner Davis Johnson, the Senior Home Repair Program is through the Community Services Department.
But. I'm allocating it because it's for District Five residents.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, my, my second stands, I'm, I mean, I'm happy to move forward if we want to go ahead and vote on it.
Okay.
I'll say I have not yet received it yet.
Who hasn't received it? No one has received it.
You could do the other ones, I mean.
Okay, do you have Arabia Mountain, Ragsdale House?
I do have that, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Back to this one then, and so I make a motion to add an item, the American Mountain Ragsdale House Allocation.
Second.
Okay, Commissioners, we'll go into the roll call here, give me just one second. Commissioner Raider. This is to add.
I know is the Ragsdale House.
Correct.
Item, and I will vote aye on adding it to the agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, five zero to add another item to the agenda. Madam Davis Johnson.
I make an item, I mean, I make a motion to allocate seventy-five thousand dollars of District Five. Park Bond Funds. To the Arabia Mountain Heritage Allowance for the purposes of renovation and expansion. Of the, excuse me, historic Ragsdale House.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and just a, a question that I have for clarity. It does say it's from the Pleasant Dale Proceeds Account, and that is, I'm assuming when Pleasant Dale Park was sold to the Board of Education. Each district got an allotment from that?
No, no, that was an allotment that I had made. An allotment for that.
Okay, okay.
So. Is Mr. Ellis on the call?
Mr. Who?
Mr. Ellis.
Ellis, yes. So I was just wondering, this is from the Pleasant Dale allocation, is that park bond money, or is that proceeds of a sale? That particular item was from the proceeds. Okay, so it's from the proceeds of that particular sale, which were reserved for. These appropriations, I remember when that happened, but it is not park bond? That's correct.
Okay.
It is not. You said it's not park bonds.
It's from the proceeds, it's from the sale of the proceeds of Pleasant Dale Park.
Oh, okay. Okay, then I'll wait and bring this one back. Because it needs to be changed, does it need to be, it needs to be changed?
So is there a motion to defer?
Yeah, a motion to defer on this one to the next meeting.
Second.
Second, all right, we'll go into the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, five zero, and that is for the deferral on the Ragsdale Agenda Item.
Okay. Okay, I have a walk-on for the Senior Aquatics Program. And I want to. Add an item to the agenda.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find that item here.
Okay.
Second. This is just the add, just to add an item first, right?
Yeah.
All right, we'll go ahead and do that one. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, five zero to add an item. All right.
Okay, then I make a motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars of the American Rescue Plan Funds Reserve for District Five Appropriation. To the Metro Atlanta YMCA for the purposes of providing summer aquatic programming. For District Five seniors.
Okay.
Second.
And just for clarity, is that something that we had received from the initial email?
Yes.
It was, it's captioned Ragsdale House.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Okay, did you resend that? Yeah, it was resend.
Okay, all right, so then on the motion to allocate the funds, Commissioner Raider, it's a roll call.
Yeah, I just have a question, and that is. Is, is the South DeKalb YMCA now open again?
It is.
Okay. And, I mean, given the, is, I mean, this is from the ARP funds, and we've already. How it's, takes a long time, are these funds going to be able to be available? YMCA gonna just do it and then get paid when they get paid?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get the fund because of the seniors, and because of the pandemic, and them not being able to participate. In the senior programs at the centers. Yeah, I mean, it's very crucial that they be able to participate. In this program this summer, so we're gonna hope and work with the administration that. Hopefully, we can get these funds out.
Hope they all can get out, all right, thank you.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna second that emotion of hope, hope beyond hope. Cause we got a six-month backlog, so.
You know.
You know, don't, don't, don't jump in front of the line, but you know, still, seniors and the kids. The people that need help.
Well, you know, like Reverend Jesse always keep hope alive.
All right, Commissioners, we've got a proper motion and second, Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, five zero to add or to allocate those funds to the YMCA.
Okay, and so my next item to add is for the Youth Commission. And I make a motion to add an item.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Terry, we're gonna go through the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, that's five zero to add Agenda Item regarding the youth.
Mission.
Youth mission. Youth Commission, pardon me.
Yeah, I make a motion to transfer fifty thousand dollars on the DeKalb County Reserve for Appropriations Account to the Office of Youth Services. For the purpose of programming calls for the DeKalb County Youth Commission Leadership Program.
All right, and we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Terry. Go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Raider.
Is this?
Question, yeah.
Yeah, is this for the add, or is this for the?
We already voted on the add, so this is for the actual allocation.
I'll only comment that we have been admonished in the past that it is appropriate for us to. Not take final action on appropriations or other things at the point of, just as a matter of open meetings type of a. Issue unless they are, you know, emergency type items, so I don't, I won't. Impede that, but I just do think that we need to follow advice and. You know, and allow the public to review the things that we're taking action on, and in this case, I don't think that that's actually happening. But I will vote aye, I guess.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, that's five zero in the affirmative for this item here. All right.
And then my last item, I'm circling back, we've already approved to add it, but I'm circling back on the. One hundred thousand dollars to a lot, one hundred thousand dollars of American Rescue. Funds Reserve for District Five for the District Five Senior Home Repair Program for the purpose of providing home repairs to District Five seniors. Who have been impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic, and. That is my motion, and I hope that everyone have received it.
Second, and then I got a comment or a question.
Okay.
And Commissioner Terry, thank you for that second to add another item to the agenda. And.
Yes.
No, we've already had it, this item was already.
You're, you're correct, my apologies about that one. Commissioner Terry.
Yeah, and I get, I do have the updated agenda item, so thank you for that, Commissioner Davis Johnson. So just, just to clarify, because the, the Senior Home Repair Program, that's gonna be. Directed to the Community Services Department, so in, in that regard, there shouldn't be. Any delay on receiving and implementing those funds, because we don't need to do an MOA or anything that goes directly to the. Department already doing this program, is that correct? I don't know if Director Mitchell or.
So. Commissioner Terry, right, allocations to internal departments are much. It's literally just moving line items in the budget, so that does not require the risk assessment. Or the development of a scope of services or an MOU.
Okay, so there'll be no delays in these funds, really, it's just a matter of the program and.
Defined and put the mechanics in place to run it, and then the money should be transferred, or they would even spend out of that account, we'll work that part out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Raider.
Just as a point of words on the page, the Community Development Department is not. Mentioned in this particular agenda item, so with the Chair. Or would the maker entertain a friendly motion to include the Community Development Department? As the recipient of this grant.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, for the, for the purposes of. For the purposes of home repair.
Yes, that's right, but I mean, it just doesn't have a, it says that. The appropriation is to this District Five Senior Home Repair Program, but it does not have, that's not a Department of the County, so.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, I will accept that.
Repair program in the Community Development Department.
Development. Yes.
All right, so we've got a proper motion and second for the Senior Home Repairs. Go ahead and move into the roll call. Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
And that's five zero to approve that as well, and just to make sure these have been sent over to staff. So they can get this added in for, for the record. All right, with that said, Commissioners, we are at Commissioner Comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Raider.
Thank you, hold on just a second. So, my first announcement is, please vote if you haven't already today, the lines are short earlier in the day, so please make time. At lunch and over the rest of the afternoon to fill your civic responsibility. And your great privilege in this republic to vote. I want to thank everyone who had attended the South. Fort Peachtree Creek Trail Study Meeting two weeks ago. I've heard from many of you, and encourage you to take the survey and let your voice be heard regarding. The trail extension in the neighborhood near you. Your comments will inform the final recommendations on those trail improvements, and we're looking forward to. Having your thoughts reflected. I also want to say that I enjoyed on Sunday being with Pastor Ken Avrels at Mount Siam AME. And enjoyed their promotion and graduation ceremony there. I wanted to tell my constituents and all the residents that we have been working with the Sanitation Division. To address all of the many missed pickups for household garbage, recycling, and yard waste. Please continue to let us know and let them know through the three-one-one line, but also our office. About missed collections, the department reports that. There are new hires that can support the collection efforts at the North Lot. And that hopefully those new hires will help us to meet. The staffing challenges, we're also looking forward to action by the administration to ensure that we can retain. And recruit CDL certified drivers for our vehicles. And we'll continue to work with the public, and we appreciate their patience as we address this service delivery issue. As we hear stories of our friends and neighbors who are contracting COVID nineteen, and as vaccinations for our youngest citizens. Continue to expand, we're grateful for the joint effort of our Board of Health, our community partners, and the local government. And to incentivize so many small events to reach in hard-to-reach corners of the county. On that topic, our small community events to reach hard. To reach constituents funded by. Commission-directed funds as well as the incentive cards that have been generally authorized. We've seen totaled backs through small events in schools, churches, and community centers in cities so far as. Almost eleven thousand vaccinations delivered, twenty-six hundred in schools. Eighty-three hundred in community events, and we really just think that this has been a great. Experience, and we hope to expand the program to include other health services. I also think that these programs that we are developing in the county should be included and considered. As we negotiate our relationship with Grady and other health service providers. In DeKalb in that. Contract negotiation process, because primary delivery of care is the most cost-effective way. For us to be able to help to improve health outcomes in DeKalb. And we have shown that it is possible through the ARP-funded events, and we'd like to see those. I think continue and be expanded after this crisis has. Been put in our rearview mirrors, so with that said, I will yield back.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Raider, Commissioner Bradshaw.
All right, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and good morning, everyone. Today I would like to begin my comments by extending my condolences to the family of Pastor Vandy Simmons and Dr. Bonita Simmons of Antioch AMI Church on the passing of their daughter, Van Keela Simmons, who passed away far too young at the age of thirty-eight years old. Pastor Simmons has been a friend and counselor to me since we met back in November of twenty sixteen, and I cannot imagine what he and his family are going through right now. The loss of a child at any age is devastating, and I just want the Simmons family to know that they are in my thoughts and prayers as they navigate this difficult time. Back in twenty twenty, when we were in the midst of the pandemic and there was a great degree of fear and uncertainty in the air, this circumstance induced my team and I to produce a program called an Evening of Healing and Inspiration, which brought together faith leaders and musical talent to offer the citizens of DeKalb County a brief respite from COVID nineteen through words and music. This program was brilliantly produced by Diamond Lewis and her amazing team at DCTV. And as our planning process moved forward, we realized that we were in need of a mistress of ceremonies. I'm not precisely sure why it occurred to me to think about asking Lori Wilson from Channel Two Action News, but she always struck me as a very genuine person. So under the heading of If You Don't Ask, You Don't Get, I reached out to her and shared with her what we were attempting, and if she would consider helping us out. Much to my delight, she graciously accepted and did an outstanding job for which myself and citizens of DeKalb County are very grateful. To that point, Lori and I had never met, and that remained the case until very recently. But on May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, Lori Wilson and I met in person for the first time. And my objective was simply to thank her in person for what she did for us during that very challenging time. It was a great pleasure to get to know her a little better, and I can report that she is, she is as nice in person as she comes across on TV. And I'll always be grateful to her for her kindness and generosity. On May fourteenth, it was great to join my fellow veterans at ANVETS and ANVETS Post Forty-four members as we held our first in-person general meeting in over two years and the first meeting in our new permanent meeting location at the American Legion Post Sixty-six Building in Avondale Estates. This is a great development, and I would like to thank our Post Commander, Al Wright, and all of our Post Leadership Team for their diligence in making this happen. Later that day, it was a great privilege to join Commissioner Larry Johnson for the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the amphitheater adjacent to the Porter Sanford Performing Arts Center in South DeKalb. This is a wonderful achievement and a testament to Commissioner Larry Johnson's vision and persistence, and we could not have had a more beautiful day for the celebration. Also want to commend Commissioner Lorraine Cochran Johnson for lending her financial support to this project. We all know that having a vision is good. Pretty pictures of possible plans can be nice, but without follow-through and the resources to make it happen, it does not amount to very much. Overall, it was a wonderful celebration and a great coming together of the community. My wife and I were both honored to be in attendance. On May fifteenth, it was a great privilege to join the congregation of Greater Piney Grove Baptist Church as they celebrated the seventieth birthday of Senior Pastor William E. Flippin Senior. Some might think that one would take a break on one's birthday and allow someone else to preach the sermon, but not Pastor Flippin. He delivered a powerful and inspirational sermon that morning, proving to all that he still got it. It was an honor for me to be there and help celebrate this wonderful occasion, and I wish him many more years of success and prosperity. On May seventeenth, it was great to join Tucker Precinct Commander Major Craig Medlin and members of his team for Majors Night Out in Hairston Park. This is a great initiative designed to demonstrate law enforcement's engagement in the community. I want to commend our law enforcement personnel for their job that they do and for the continued community engagement. It was also very gratifying to see so many people enjoying Hairston Park. This wonderful space is one of my first park bond fund allocations upon taking office, and this affords me the opportunity to once again thank the Friends of Hairston Park led by Gwen Stigall and Janse Costello for their dedication to this park and their partnership with my office, and I look forward to returning to Hairston Park sometime soon. On May twentieth, it was great to attend the Galeo Power Breakfast. Galeo works hard to uplift our Latino communities in Georgia and prepare leaders within the community to get people ready to vote. It was a wonderful celebration of Latino achievement, and I was honored to be there to underscore my support for this important community. Want to thank my friend and Galeo Board Member Adella Yelton for the invitation to attend, and my new friend Maria Peck for being such a wonderful host, and it was a pleasure as always to see Martha Ravello from Senator Warnock's office, who does a great job on behalf of all of us, and I look forward to next year's event. If you need any assistance, you may call my office at four oh four three seven one four seven four nine or visit my website at commissionerbradshaw.com. And I will close today by once again thanking the citizens of District Four and DeKalb County for affording me this opportunity to serve. It is indeed an honor, and I yield back to the Chair.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Bradshaw. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I first want to also give my condolences to Pastor Vandy Simmons and First Lady Dr. Bonita Simmons in the death of their daughter, the Keela Simmons. Our heart and our hearts go out, and our prayers are going up for their strength to get through this very difficult time. We all could only imagine how it is to bury a child. And so we will continue to pray for them. I would like to remind everyone that today is Selection Day. The polls are open until seven PM. As long as you are in, as long as you are in line by seven PM, you will be able to vote. If you have any questions about voting, I encourage you to visit www.dekalbvotes.com and review the ten things that you need to know before you go to vote, which provides great information for everyone, and we're looking forward to a great day of voting in DeKalb County. I'd like to also say that it was a wonderful, beautiful opening of the Rainbow Park Amphitheater. And I would thank Commissioner Larry Johnson and Commissioner Lorraine Cochran Johnson for their efforts in opening this amphitheater. You know, I was just thrilled to see all of the performances, and of course, I just loved Jennifer Holliday. So it was a great evening and truly, truly enjoyed it. I'd like to also acknowledge the DeKalb Lawyers Association for their annual scholarship breakfast, and the DeKalb Lawyers Association is the minority association here, Lawyers Association here in DeKalb County. The organization gave over ten thousand dollars in scholarships and raised over eighteen thousand dollars in future scholarship money at the event. So we just want to say thank you for that. I want to say happy birthday to my friend, my homeboy, Reverend William Flippins, and so I was not able to attend the ceremony because of another conflict, but I did see it on Facebook, and it seems as if they had a wonderful, wonderful time. So congratulations to him on that thirty, uh, seventieth birthday. I would like to invite everyone to save the date for our second annual DeKalb County Juneteenth Celebration on June the eighteenth from eleven AM to two PM. We invite everyone to come out on, to enjoy food, music, entertainment, face painting, and a taste of the culture. And the event will take place at the Decatur Bandstand located at five oh nine North McDonald Street in downtown Decatur. So we're looking forward to, it's being hosted by the CEO and the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. I want to remind everyone that the DeKalb County Sanitation Division will host a free paper shredding event on Saturday, June the eleventh from eight AM to twelve noon at the Sanitation Division Central Transfer Station located at thirty-seven twenty Leroy Scott Drive, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three two. Participation is free and open to all residents in DeKalb County Sanitation Division service area. For questions, please call four oh four two nine four two thousand or visit www.dekalbsanitation.com. Mark your calendars. The DeKalb County Pools are scheduled to open on this Saturday, May the twenty eighth. The official pool season will run from May the twenty eighth to September the fifth on Labor Day. For more information, please visit www.dekalbcountyga.gov/parks. The Historic Brew Street School Consolidation Conceptual Design Feedback Survey is now live. The feedback provided, provided on the survey will be incorporated into the final conceptual design, which we presented, which will be presented to the public on site at the Historic Brew Street School on Saturday, June the fifteenth. For more information on how to take the, the survey, please visit arabiaalliance.org slash brewstreet. I'd like to close my comments this morning by stating that I am glad to hear that there will be youth programming at the South DeKalb YMCA this summer. The YMCA has partnered with the DeKalb County Police Athletic League at the Dog Baseball Summer League for youth ages fifteen to twenty. Games will be held on Tuesdays and Thursdays at ten PM and eleven PM. Youth must arrive at eleven forty-five PM to participate. There is no advanced registration needed. For more information, please call or email Detective Ricketts at four zero four six six four one two two five or KK Ricketts at dekalbcountyga.gov. Y also, the Y has also partnered with Swim School to provide swim lessons and training programs for youth aged four to seventeen. Adults, eighteen plus and parents in top classes for three months to two years old. For more information, please email info at swemsweschool.com. Of course, this morning I allocated fifty thousand dollars to the South DeKalb YMCA to provide the summer swim lessons and aquatic training for our seniors. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for your support this, this morning, and I want to say that I am keeping hope alive that we can get the money to initiate this program for the seniors this summer. And so I'm looking forward to seeing the Y back open and providing needed services to our community. I want to continue everyone to get vaccinated, and if you've not already done so, remember, don't wait, vaccinate. Please know that your District Five staff and commissioners are available and commissioner are available to, available to you. Please feel free to call us at four oh four three seven one twenty-one fifty-nine, or you can email us at mdjohnson@dekalbcountyga.gov. If you're hosting an event that you would like us to attend, please feel free to email us an invitation at mdjohnson@dekalbcountyga.gov. I invite you to follow me on my social media, Facebook, Marita Davis Johnson, Twitter, at Marita D. Johnson, Instagram, at Marita D. Johnson. For more information on any other announcements, DeKalb District Five upcoming events, please feel free to visit my website at commissionermaritajohnson.com. Or you may call my office at four oh four three seven one twenty-one fifty-nine. As always, don't hesitate to contact my office with any of your questions and concerns or suggestions. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your District Five Commissioner, and I yield back to Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Ted Terry.
Good morning and afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. A few just quick announcements. Happy Election Day. Today is Election Day. Polls are open till seven PM. We know that there have been a few polling changes just from the last reapportionment and some location, you know, building issues. So make sure everyone, please check your polling place before you go vote, dekalbvotes.com. This is, we say this every year, it's the most important election of our lives, but it really is, really, really is important that everyone makes their voice be heard in this primary election and certainly later in the year. Yep, so and then, of course, just again, reminder that dekalbvotes.com has all of the helpful links for any voting questions that you may have. I'm going to go vote here in about, you know, five minutes whenever we get off this off this Zoom, so I'll get my voting sticker just in a little bit. On Saturday, we did have a, a food distribution across the county, but also at Brandon Hills, and so I appreciate CO Williams and Director Mitchell and Director Scott and Chief Fulham and the DeKalb County Police Department as well as other groups out supporting the Brandon Hills community. We are planning a follow-up community meeting with the residents next Saturday, and we are officially launching a community task force that will serve as sort of the umbrella of residents and community stakeholders interested in supporting the, the residents and the, the ultimate sort of refurbishment and hopefully, you know, redevelopment of the Brandon Hills site for the good of the Clarkston community, working alongside the Blight Task Force that the administration is undertaking as well as other community and nonprofit groups. We heard a little bit this morning that COVID is not out of sight. We are seeing hospitalization numbers slowly rising, so please be vigilant and courteous of others. Some folks will probably continue to wear masks, and even though it's not required necessarily, please have grace with anyone who chooses to wear a mask as everyone's situation is different. Kudos and congrats to the graduates, our DeKalb County students. As I was going to the food distribution on Saturday, Hallerford Stadium was packed with a big old graduation of the DeKalb County students. So congratulations to our students and their transition to the next level of their lives and careers. And their transition to the next level of their lives and careers and post-secondary education. Have a great summer, students and teachers and faculty. Everyone who's been working really hard under really difficult circumstances at the school system these last few months and really throughout the last two years. We do know that there'll be more kids out in the neighborhoods. So everyone, please be safe and drive safe. Look out for our, our little ones running around and recreating in the neighborhood. Next Monday is Memorial Day, so it is a holiday off, but we will. You know, count our blessings and stand proud as we remember those who have courageously served and given their lives to our country and our nation. And so we wish everyone a happy Memorial Day. And with that, I'll yield back my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ted Terry, and I will have some brief comments. So I have been working with, within my district and reaching out to the members of the Tucker CID. Community Improvement District to go door to door basically to all the businesses and, and hear what they have to say. What their concerns are about doing business in DeKalb County and how we can make improvements. I've been distributing a one-page flyer with important business services, contact information. If you'd like a copy of the flyer, please reach out. We'd be happy to send it over to you. On May eleventh, I had the opportunity to attend Commissioner Raiders and the PATH Foundation's meeting, discuss the South Peachtree Creek Trail Study. Was well attended. It was great to see lots of people out there and of course, trails are a benefit to DeKalb County and I hope we can all get behind those. May fourteenth was a busy day and it started with a trip over to the city of Tucker and their car show. Where I saw many classic muscle cars that were popular back in the day and, and gas was also cheaper back then, too. After that, I went over to the PDK Air Show and saw many airplanes from between World War Two to modern day air machines. DeKalb County bought out, brought out the best of the best and showed some of the latest technology we have available to serve our residents from fire rescue to the police bomb squad. By the way, when I say best of the best, I also mean the people that work for DeKalb County. From the police officers to the firefighters, to the staff that was in the background that serves our community. Thank you for all the awesome work you guys do in putting together that event and what you do on a daily basis for our residents in DeKalb County. This is what helps make it a great place to live, work and play. Because Saturday wasn't a busy enough day, I also had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting with Commissioner Larry Johnson at the Rainbow Park Amphitheater. And listen to the fabulous Jennifer Holliday. Although I did arrive late, I heard and saw amazing talent from the live band and performers. It was a special honor to hear and see Ms. Jennifer Holloway, excuse me, Holliday. She has an absolutely incredible voice. I was also joined that evening with Commissioners Larry Johnson, Commissioner Maria Davis Johnson and Commissioner Bradshaw. On Friday, May twenty, I took a tour of the Toby Grant Recreational Facility with Doc, with Mr. Alan Mitchell. It's an amazing facility. It's going to have its own library, workout room, basketball court, ballet room, to name some of the services that are going to be offered there. This facility will be a valued resource in the community for at least the next generation of DeKalb County residents. It's a great feeling to see our districts make the needed improvements to support the long-term growth for our residents and Commissioners, I will be asking for something like that in District One. On Friday, May twenty, I had the opportunity to attend the Asian and Pacific Islander HIV AIDS Awareness Day Event hosted by CPACs and the DeKalb County Board of Health. It was located at the CPAC's office in Shambly. The event was well attended. Always good friendly folks over at CPACs and the Board of Health. Also this past Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend a groundbreaking ceremony at Saint Barnum's Anglican Church. For their expansion of the current buildings. Despite the pandemic, this can, community has been working to broaden its building and arms to the community it serves. I'd like to thank the pastors, parishioners and contractors for warmly welcoming me to the ongoing work and the events that they had that day. For tomorrow, we have the Fresh on Deck Farmers Market coming to Pleasantale Park. Starts at five and ends at seven, so two hours. You'll have, Free Market provides guests with pre-bagged fresh fruits and vegetables, cooking tips and nutrition information. This partnership is made possible through the support of DeKalb County Government, the DeKalb County Board of Health and the University of Georgia. To kick things off, we will be showing how some of the fresh food can be prepared tomorrow morning on Fox Five's Good Day Atlanta. Finally, I'd like to say and acknowledge for all the veterans who have served on Memorial Day, your services are much appreciated and your sacrifices are much noted. Please come out and vote. That is, I think, perhaps the best way to show appreciation for those who have served our country. It's as always, an honor to serve as the Presiding Officer of the Board of Commissioners, not just through the legislative stewardship, but through the support of District One residents. Dealing with hardships and celebrating life's milestones. My office continues to help businesses and residents with permitting issues and other issues, other business issues with the county. If my office can ever be of assistance to you, or if you'd like me to attend an event you're hosting, please never hesitate to reach my office by email at districtone@dekalbcountyga.gov. Please follow me on the following social media channels, Facebook and Instagram, Commissioner Patrick D. One and Twitter is CommishPatrick. With that, Commissioners, unless there's any other business before us, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I got a motion from Commissioner Terry and a proper second from Commissioner Davis Johnson. We'll do this by voice and hands. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, everybody. I hope you enjoy the, the vote as well as the Memorial Day coming up. We appreciate y'all and we'll see you next week or the week after.
And Thursday.